Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Temecula City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, August 27th. That was beautiful prelude music by Ali Negulescu. Negulescu, please stand up and take a bow. Thank you so much for being here tonight. It's always good to start off our meeting with a flag salute and an invocation. So we're going to start first with an invocation. Mr. Adam Aaron, Aaron Adams, our city manager, followed by the flag salute.
Adam Aaron is not here.
You know, since you're bringing it up, that's how he is in my phone. Okay, Adams, Aaron. So there you go. That's how it goes.
Let me introduce myself to the city council.
There you go. Well, we're off to a rousing start. Will you please give an invocation?
Would you please stand?
Councilmember Ron, you will do the flag salute with no trouble, okay?
Please bow your head. Dear heavenly Father, we just give you thanks for this day. We give you thanks for the privilege of convening in this building and doing the work and serving as a local government body for the city of Temecula. Lord, I just pray for wisdom and discernment for all the city staff, the city council. Give you thanks for the people of Temecula, and we know you have your hand and your blessing on this city, and it is a blessed city indeed. Lord, I just ask for protection for our first responders, our police and firemen and women. Just continue to keep them out of harm's way, and we ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right. Please join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. God bless. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards. Councilmember Ron.
Here.
Councilmember Schwain.
Here.
Councilmember Stewart.
Here.
Mayor Nigar.
Mayor Nigar is here. I see the students are back to school. Where are my plumas tonight? Pumas in the house. How about the golden bears? Golden bears are here. All right. What about the wolf pack? All right. One wolf pack. There you go. Welcome, you guys. Hope you got a good start back to school and hope you learned something here tonight. Feel free to ask us questions. Right now, it's the presentation and proclamation portion of our meeting, and we have a presentation regarding the city's workforce program. Charles Walker, come on up. What do you have for us tonight, Charles?
Thanks for allowing us to share our programs with you. We're going to talk about the workforce development and youth training programs. We'll start with our Future Physicians Leaders Program. This is a six-week program. Individuals interested in careers in health fields. This is for undergraduate students only. It started in Temecula seven years ago. We partner with the UCR School of Medicine and Temecula Valley Hospital. Dr. Jerry Eason has been our technical advisor since the beginning. This program has 50 students. 25 get to shadow in the hospital and around-town other clinics. Obviously, you can see here, it's broken into three parts: lecture series led by different healthcare professionals, community health project, and shadowing opportunities. They get to do a lot of things from setting cast, things like that. Since the program started seven years ago, we have some graduates from medical school, and they're already started, starting their residencies. Some of these individuals have spoken at the Regional Cancer Task Force Meeting. Because a lot of young people in high school wanted to be in our Future Physicians Leaders Program, we just couldn't accommodate it, so we created a medical career pathway just for high schoolers. Same program, just for high schoolers. They do the exact same thing, except the shadowing. And the reason they can't do the shadowing is because of insurance purposes. This program is only four weeks as opposed to six weeks. We always have a waiting list, 50 young people every summer. Believe it or not, there's a shortage of lawyers in the region.
No comment.
Similar to the Future Physicians Leaders Program, this is just for undergraduate students. It's a six-week program, and this is for young people interested in the legal profession. You can see some of the things they get to be involved in. Because of how innovative this program is, every year, the state bar president has come to Temecula for the last five years to meet with our students. He said that no other city in the state, or to his knowledge in the country, has done anything like this. So he has taken time out of his day to come into the city every year. Our Youth Entrepreneurs Program is for high schoolers interested in starting their own business. It shows that just because you have an idea and you want to start your own business, it's not that easy. It's a four-week program out of our incubator. Several community leaders come in and lecture and judge the young people and help them with their business plans. Very popular program, and the winning projects, we try to give them as much technical assistance as we can to see if we can get these projects and businesses off the ground. Junior Women STEM Program. We've been doing this program for the last 10 years. We've been partnering with Abbott Laboratories for those 10 years. This program takes place every month, and in the summertime, we have camps. During that time, we have lectures led by people in the STEM field, different guest speakers, a lot of hands-on activities. And this program is for middle-school girls only. We're trying to introduce young ladies and keep them in the STEM field. We're trying to keep this homegrown talent here in Temecula. Our Leadership Academy. This program teaches life skills to high schoolers, either getting into college or getting a job. Believe it or not, we've had superintendents from other school districts who've had their own children attend this program. Their children have come home with the information that they've received, and they've taken that same information and brought it to their school districts, and they've incorporated it in their school curriculums. We are pretty proud of that. You can see all the things they get to learn. This is the stuff that we believe that possibly the school district thinks that families should be learning at home, and the parents think the school district should be teaching in the school. Okay, our College and Vocational Fair. You've heard me talk about this a lot. This is, believe it or not, this is our 11th year. This is great economic development, both short-term and long-term. Short-term, we get young people and their families to go to the mall to buy things. Long-term, they find a school, attend, and bring things back. We get about 10,000 people every year to attend. All this information comes from the marketing department from the Promenade Mall. The Promenade Mall states that this is the second busiest day behind Black Friday for the mall, and we want to thank many of our partners that helped make this fair a success. Promenade Mall, obviously. Temecula Valley Unified School District, the Chaparral Junior RLC, Navy RLC, Alice Sullivan and the Temecula Valley Chamber of Commerce. They've been with us, led by her, since day one. Assistance League and many others. And we usually get 280 schools to 300 schools, and we take up both floors. Global Citizens. This is similar to our Leadership Academy in that it teaches independent living skills, and this program primarily serves our high-school youth and recently graduated youth with special Now we're going into our vocational training as opposed to what we just covered, our professional development programs. Bill McEachair, former city employee, is our technical advisor, and I want to thank him for helping us get this program off the ground. This program's very, our construction training program, this program's very successful, and we've expanded the program by partnering with MSJC, and this has allowed us to expand enrollment. Many of our graduates have already been accepted into the Southwest Carpenters Union and are already working in this field. Obviously, I'm not going to read everything off the PowerPoint here, but these are the things that they go over. Our Medical Scribe Program. They get certified to be a medical scribe. We place them in different medical offices around town. I was at the Temecula Valley Hospital. I was stopped by a former student in the program, and she said this program allowed her to become employed at the hospital. Our New Culinary Arts Program, partnering with TVUSD and the CTE Program and MSJC, another successful collaboration, introduces the culinary field, gives them all the training they need to enter at a base level, baseline level, and then we place them in internships, externships with the intention of getting jobs. Our Automotive Externship Program, a program that we partner with TVUSD and the city of Temecula. After the young people complete their training through the CTE Program, they come through our externship program where they place, where we place them with partner dealerships. All the program participants have received permanent positions so far after completing the externship, and I think that's something to be commended. Thanks to our partners at Hind, DCH, Paradise and Gosh for their continued support of our program and young people. Last summer, all of them, like I said, were hired to permanent positions, and so far this summer, they've all been hired as well. Our Vediculture and Horticulture Vocational Program, another program geared towards our special-needs population, teaching them about the wine industry, and this year, we were granted a statewide CPRS award. Our Youth Innovators. This is an internship for high-school students. We created this program as an opportunity for high-school students to gain community service and become involved in government. They help put on many of the city's youth programs, such as the Young Women's Career Conference led by city councilmember Marion Edwards, Rocktober, the Regional Leadership Conference, and they help with the Mayor's Youth Appreciation Luncheon. And our Internship and Fellowship Program. It's a really robust program. We go through 100, 200 interns every year throughout the city. Thank you to our IT Department and our HR Department to help facilitate, to make this It's one of the best in the state. We've had other cities from out of state call and try to mimic what we do, ask us how are we able to have this many interns and how are we able to place them, and we just try to give them our best practices. We place them in every department. This is a program for undergraduates, graduates in graduate school, recent college graduates, and veterans. Some of our interns have gone on to work for NASA, Google, the San Diego Police, and of course, city of Temecula. This is a photo of our recent class and program participants. I just wanted to share that, this picture. Okay. Just to recap, these are workforce training programs. We couldn't do this, these programs, without the support and leadership from the city council, without the support from our directors by allowing them into their offices and allowing staff to mentor them and sharing resources. I thank you. And our community advisors, Dr. Jerry Eason, Robert Rosenstein, Robin Johnson, Julie No, Chamber of Commerce, School District, CTE, MSJC, and too many others to name right now. Thank you.
Charles, thank you. Don't go anywhere just yet. Any questions for Charles or comments? Mr. Protem Stewart.
When I first got on city council, he was one of the first staff that I got to sit down and talk to, and I was so impressed that the city of Temecula actually does this because this doesn't happen in every city. And what he has done with all these programs is giving, given a lot of kids the opportunities to try something out before committing to that career, which is so important. You know, you can spend a lot of money going to college and realize you hate being a lawyer. And so we give them the opportunity to actually shadow a lawyer and find out what, how hard this job is, how much time you're stuck looking at notes and, you know, burying your face in a book. And so same with the construction trade. When we started that back in January 17, I was bringing in contractors, telling them about drywalling and how you have to schlep drywall, sometimes up a couple flights of stairs if you want to be a drywaller. And so, you know, we were giving them real, real-life experience to kind of give these kids an opportunity to figure out what they wanted to do in life, and that's why I love what Charles does for our city.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Anybody else have a comment? Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Charles, thank you and the city for everything that you do to partner with Career Tech Education, and I'll, you know, as full transparency, I'm the coordinator of CTE for the school district, and we see such a change in our students when they've gone out on those work-based learning assignments, and that's what CTE does also. So you've given us another vehicle, another avenue for our students. I know they've shadowed, job-shadowed in our Public Works Department, which they absolutely loved. I'm going to be talking to you pretty soon about the Fire Department and some other opportunities for them, but statistics show that students who have a chance to do work-based learning have a much, much easier time finding a job, number one. They also have, attend college in higher numbers because this isn't just for students who are not going to college. It's for students who are going to go to college and they don't know what they want to study, so this helps them find an avenue of study. Or if they want to get a good-paying job while they're going to school, it can help with that. It gets them into the workforce already, in some cases with certifications and the qualifications for entry level, and a lot of times, that's the only place that they get soft-skill training, you know, how to dress, how to interview, how to write a resume, things like that. And then it's also for students who plan on going into the military. So after they've taken their ASVAB, they can actually get hands-on work-based learning experiences to see if they're really as good at that thing that ASVAB says they are or if they'd rather do something else. So it is really an invaluable program for college-bound, you know, workforce-bound and military-bound students, and we see that they have greater successes in higher numbers. So thank you, and thank you to the city for continuing to do this. It's amazing, and this is not done anywhere else on this level. So thanks.
Anybody else?
Just a quick one. You know, I mean, I just want to say, congrats. You know, I mean, this, where this started and where it is today, I mean, cities have internship programs and, you know, outreach with their youth, but you took it in a direction that no other city goes and kind of did the Temecula thing with it, and it's incredible. I mean, it really is. And for our kids to be able to have this sort of opportunity and to be able to work with local businesses and seek job opportunities locally, I mean, it's a wonderful thing. And, you know, just kudos to you and everybody in the city who's worked on that. So, thanks.
Councilmember Schwain.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Charles, I just want to say a couple things really quick. Thank you, first of all. Thanks for the presentation because I think it's important that the community knows that we're doing this. I mean, obviously, your programs are popular, but the wider community, it's important for them to know as well. And then, you know, the picture you had of everyone on city hall steps, you know, that's just a small sliver of the lives that you impact. So you think about that for a second, and all the youth in our community that you impact. So, thank you.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Just another comment. When he was talking, I don't want people to gloss over it, but not only do we give them the training, but quite often, we're able to get them the job, too. So job placement is something we really concentrate on, too. We want to, we want these kids to be successful, and so we try to afford them every opportunity to do that, and sometimes that is actually getting them a job, too, so.
Thank you. Charles, how long have you been with the city?
Over 11 years.
11 years now. And, you know, the council wanted you to come in and give this report, obviously because, you know, it's, we seldom get to see it all together, but I think we also wanted to recognize you and the work that you've done over the years. You know, you're, I mean this in a good way. You're seldom seen except for all your work product. It just seems like the council says, "Set up this program." Next thing you know, you get together with your colleagues, and there's a program, and we blink, and it's three or four years old and thriving. And so this is our opportunity to say thank you on behalf of the citizens of Temecula. Put that photo back up there of everybody up on the, up on the steps. Exponential. That's just this year, okay? Definitely exponential. Congratulations, sir. Thank you for being part of our team.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I appreciate it. Thank you. Madam City Clerk, it's time for public comments. Do we have any?
Mr. Mayor, we do. We have several comments.
So on public comments, and then you were telling me we have some on the consent calendar as well.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments on non-adjourned items, and we have four public comments on item number five.
Okay, so when we get to consent, item number five, I do want to pull it. I think we have enough speakers here to warrant that, but we do want to take the public comment speakers first. So do we have a video?
We do.
Hi, I'm Seth with DJ Sewing. A total of 30 minutes is provided for members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city addressing the public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
Okey-dokey. Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the first speaker is Bill Veal, to be followed by Helen Horvath.
Hi, Bill.
As you know, my name is Bill Veal. I'm with the Old Town Jamaica Gunfighters, and I'm here on behalf of the Old Town Jamaica Gunfighters, the Temecula Valley Historical Society, and the city of Temecula to invite Let me adjust this here. Our annual Western Day is coming up in just two and a half weeks. It will be held, most of it will be held down at Sam Hicks Park with some reenactments over at the Hotel Temecula. It's not listed on this pamphlet here, but we also have, will have train rides. This is a free event, so we're welcoming anybody and everybody to come.
Food booths, things like that?
Pardon me?
Will you have food booths there?
We don't have food booths as yet, but we are working on that.
Mm-hmm, okay. And what else? You have Civil War reenactments?
Yes, Civil War reenactments. We have roping demonstrations. We'll have some rope making. We have some, we'll have a telegraph set up there so the kids can learn how to do Morse code, and we'll have some old-fashioned water pumps. We'll have to do, we're going to show them how to do an old-fashioned bucket brigade. The Temecula Valley Historical Society will have a booth there where they'll be showing some sewing events, and also we'll have some characters, historical characters there. For the homeschoolers, they may want to come by and interview these characters for their history portion of their schooling.
Very good. Also, old west reenactments, right?
And also, yes, of course.
Okay. And you'll be using blank, blank shot, right?
Yes, yes.
Just so everybody knows, okay? Do you guys make it real authentic? So make sure you get the word out to everybody so nobody freaks out because they hear gunshots.
Yes. Actually, that's why I'm here tonight, too. Get the word out, yes.
I'm kind of leading you down that path, too. Yeah. All right. Anything else you want to tell us?
We had talked to some of the council members, I think, Stu, we talked to you, about the city was going to put up some signs, too, to help warn the people that we're going to have gunfire.
So what you can do is talk to Mayor Protem Stewart or our city clerk offline.
Okay.
Now's not a good time to get into it, but you can straighten all that out.
Great.
All right. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Helen Horvath, to be followed by Robert Isconti.
Hi there, Helen.
Good morning. How are you doing?
Pretty good. Did you get up late?
Why do you mean?
No, because it's the evening, and you're wishing us good morning.
I grew up from Alpine. It was an hour and a half drive just to visit you.
Got, oh, gotcha.
So I wanted to come and say hello.
Well, welcome.
I'm basically here because I'm running for the 50th Congressional District. I had, believe I sent you an email a while ago that I was running. I'm from Alpine. I'm in, I actually live in the district, and I'm here today basically to introduce myself to the Honorable Counsel and city employees and also the community. I hold a master's degree in counseling psychology and marriage and family therapy and also a background in, with art and play therapy. And in this capacity, I provide family and individual therapy to autistic children, domestic violence and sexual abuse clients. So I've become an expert in those areas, and I'm currently an organizational development psychologist. What that means is I like to follow the money. I'm really nosy about where did the money go? So one of the projects I worked on with my company, Ilka Technologies, was to examine a program with Department of Defense that is currently costing 323 million in order to save $300 million. And I designed, I showed Department of Navy how they can save overall up to 100, between 55 and 110 million a year. So I like saving money to the government and most of all, to taxpayers. My firm, Ilka Technology, does all types of consulting for government. We're primarily a government firm, and my favorite saying is, "Follow the money. Where did it go? And how can we find it?" I'm not someone who wants to shift money from one place to another. I actually want to reduce deficit, and I'm really concerned about how our gross, gross domestic product is, which is basically import-export and all that, all those economic factors. And by 2049, Office of Management budget said we'll be at 144%, which is kind of like really maxing out your credit cards, and then again, was doing more. So other issues I'm working on right now, and I'm also the chair of the Military and Veterans Advisory Council, so I've been working on military sexual assault problems and how it impacts the local communities here. Because when someone's assaulted and leaves the military, they generally have mental health issues, post-traumatic stress disorder, anxiety, and things of that nature. I've worked on tribal veterans issues such as how to get services to veterans and clean air and healthcare, and I've worked on the one, I'm on the One VA Community Advocacy Board where we sit and listen to veterans' issues and make recommendations, things like veterans' benefits, what are the problems? And then I'm a former member of the Alzheimer Care Project where I have been advocating for a new facility for veterans in South County because they were promised it 20 years ago, and it's still not there.
I'm going to need to interrupt you right there, but I'll let you say once again, what district are you running for?
The 50th District and the 40th.
And when's your election?
And it's March 3rd, um, for the primaries, and my website's horvac campaign dot com.
Thank you for visiting us tonight.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Madam City Clerk, did we have more than two speakers on public comment? I know we had some on, on the consent one.
No, those were the only two speakers on non-agendized items. The next four are on agendized.
Thank you very much. All right, so we're gonna hold those till we get to the consent calendar. Um, right now, we're gonna go to city council reports. Any, my colleagues in the queue?
We'll say one thing.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, for those of you who attended the cruise night the other night in Old Town, it was spectacular. And it, what was really cool about it, it was all local people. The whole, all the old cars were all local Temecula residents, all the people who were standing there, 'cause it was all just advertised locally. It didn't go out like the Broad Run would, LA and everywhere else. So it just felt like a really cool community event. So I just wanted to say I had a great time, so.
Thank you. Um, I heard it was a fantastic time, and I hope you can work it out and do it again. I think it was a great community event.
Yeah.
Well done. We're gonna move to the consent calendar now. All matter, oh, Mr. City Attorney, you had something you wanted to say before I read the rules on the consent calendar?
Afterwards.
Afterwards, okay. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There'll be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. I think we have a, a couple of conflicts or potential conflicts. Did you wanna speak to that, Mr. City Attorney?
Once, once you-
Once I call?
Yeah, once you call.
Very good. Uh, item number one, waive the reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Item two, approve the action minutes of August 13th, 2019. Uh, number three, approve the list of demands. Number four, approve city treasurer's report as of June 30th, 2019. Number five, adopt a resolution supporting balanced energy and maintaining local control of energy solutions. That one we are going to pull. Number six, approve sponsorship agreement with Michelle's Place for Walk of Hope Event at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Pro Tem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards. Seven, approve a consultant services agreement with Soft Resources LLC for citywide financial system upgrade consulting services. Eight, approve the First Amendment to the lease agreement between City of Temecula and Mount San Yuceno College. That's at the request of subcommittee members Yours Truly, Mike Nigar, and Councilmember Matt Ron. Nine, approve the contingency increase for Overland Drive Extension, Public Works 16 dash 06. Ten, approve the Water Quality Management Plan Alternative Compliance Agreement for the Truax Hotel. That one I'm gonna abstain from, and City Attorney will tell you why. Uh, 11, approve the Transportation Uniform Mitigation Funds Reimbursement Agreement with Western Riverside Council of Governments, also known as WR COG, for the Diaz Road Extension, Western Bypass, Rancho California Road to Cherry Street Project, planning and engineering phases, project number PW 17 dash 25. 12, approve the agreements with Rancho California Water District for recycled water service for the expanded recycled water conversion project. That's project number PW 17 dash 29. And last but not least, accept improvements and file notice of completion for traffic signal installation, Red Hawk Parkway, Vale Ranch Parkway at El Chimasol Road and Tehachapi Pass, project number PW 15 dash 09. Mr. City Attorney?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Uh, Mayor Nigar will abstain on item number 10 on the consent calendar, uh, the Water Quality Management Plan Alternative Compliance Agreement for the Truax Hotel Project. Uh, there was a potential conflict of interest from him with respect to the principal of the property owner, Mr. Truax, although it turned out not to be a conflict. However, in the abundance of caution, Mayor Nigar has elected not to participate in order to avoid the appearance of impropriety. Uh, since the item is on the consent calendar, uh, Mayor Nigar does not need to leave the dais unless the council member wishes to remove this from the consent calendar. And, uh, you may vote on the overall consent calendar because this will show your abstention and the reason why.
Thank you. And what about my colleague to my left?
Um, I can, I'll, I'll mention that when you, you call it for consideration.
Very good. Then, why don't we take a motion to approve the consent calendar, uh, with the exception of item five, which we're pulling?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes. And that passes with my noted abstention. And now we'll go to item number five. Go ahead, Mr. City Attorney.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, Councilmember Ron will not participate in this matter due to the fact that he is an officer of a nonprofit group, Californians for Balanced Energy, that is participating in the statewide discussion of these issues. And since this matter has been pulled for discussion, he will need to leave the council chamber.
All righty. Can we have a brief staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to give a brief staff report. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As you are aware, the City of Temecula recently received a request from SoCal Gas to adopt a resolution supporting balanced energy and maintaining local control of energy solutions. The former Public Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas, Brandon Lane, reached out to several cities and council members in the Inland Empire and Riverside County requesting this support. Several cities have already adopted the resolution as originally requested or in some sort of modified format. Due to Mr. Lane's departure, the Regional Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas, Robert Visconti, has renewed the request, and he is in the audience tonight to answer any questions. As the request does not clearly fall within the city's current legislative platform, it is requested that the city council consider the resolution anew and provide direction as they deem appropriate. And that concludes staff's report. And again, Mr. Visconti is in the audience to answer any specific questions.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Right now, it's, uh, time for questions of staff. Do we have any? Okay, very good. Could you call the first public speaker, please?
The first speaker is Robert Visconti.
Mr. Visconti, good evening to you, sir.
How are ya?
Well, thank you.
Good. Honorable Mayor, City Council, staff, good evening. My name's Robert Visconti. I'm a Regional Affairs Manager for SoCal Gas. I'm here to applaud your adopting the Balanced Energy Maintaining Local Control Resolution. SoCal Gas is a long and successful partnership and franchise with Temecula, and it's SoCal Gas, it's SoCal Gas's responsibility to ensure you are aware of threats to that franchise and utility costs to your cities and, your city and residents. The state of California is considering mandates towards electrification, thus moving towards a single energy source and not recognizing the risk to our communities through increased cost and the threat of diminished reliability. The proposals to force us to electrify are being made in the name of global warming, reducing greenhouse gases, and carbon emissions. These are admirable goals, but a cost benefit analysis and environmental analysis does not justify such a drastic action. Natural gas is a clean, is clean burning, abundant, and affordable, and has been part of California's clean air solution and should continue to be. Let me be clear, SoCal Gas does not oppose electrification. If you only wanna use electric appliances in your business and homes, that is your choice. Those that oppose a balanced energy portfolio and SoCal Gas's education efforts are circulating a document from the PUC, Building Decarbonization Myth and Facts. And I'm here to tell you that that document is basically accurate. Myth number one, there is no mandate. I've watched Sacramento for 20 years, and I know that we, as a community, want to address an, uh, an issue before they make it a mandate or law in Sacramento. Myth number two, today, without a mandate, Californians are not currently forced to retrofit their homes. We, as community leaders, are responsible to stay ahead of the issue, and that is what SoCal Gas is doing. Myth number three, consumers will see dramatically higher bills. Electricity is clearly more expensive than natural gas. Um, and again, I believe you've, uh, were provided that document, but it, I have no negative assertion towards the build program or the tech program. It's an incentive program for, uh, electric generation, and any incentive program is, uh, actually great. Myth four and five, um, again, talking about the build tech, no, no, uh, problem with any kind of incentive program. The only thing I would add is, the state should incentivize, uh, natural gas, uh, the Cummins engine has a near-zero natural gas engine. Is 15 freeway out here with all those truckers? That's what we need to address. That's the bigger problem on, uh, uh, our pollution issues, if you will. PUC Commissioner Mike Picker announced his preference for electrification several times, and we believe this to be flawed and costly thinking. Finally, a quick story.
You have to sum up. You have two seconds.
I'm on the, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Builder Industry Association, and I was briefing the board on these issues. Most homeowners have preference for natural gas in their homes.
I have to cut you off right there? That's good enough. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Scott Smith, to be followed by Margaret Meinke.
Mr. Smith. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. I, uh, wanted to comment on, uh, this resolution for balanced energy and maintain local control of energy solutions and, um, kinda use it also as an opportunity to mention that one of the best ways to have balanced energy and maintain local control is through, uh, community choice aggregation programs. Um, as I think most of you are aware, our local CCE is Western Community Choice, and six cities, six cities have already joined and will see benefits, along with, uh, San Diego nearby. The, um, three main benefits are increased choice and balanced energy, cost savings, local economic development, and local control. Digging into the first a little bit, with, uh, California's clean energy mandate, uh, 50% of electricity renewal by '25 going to 100% by 2045, the CCA model allows for a swifter transition to this, uh, greater renewable energy mix and would open up options like wind, solar, battery, energy storage, geothermal from the salt and sea, distributed energy, which is more reliable and resilient, uh, similar to the internet is built. Uh, another example, positive example, is with, uh, Marin Clean Energy, a CCA, where they've been able to have 80% of their energy greenhouse gas-free. Second is the cost savings, um, benefit. So WR COG did a feasibility study, and they indicated that a CCA will reduce costs, yield positive environmental impacts, and increase local control. So are the CCA's successful? Yes, definitely. They're offering their customers 20 to 30% more renewable energy than the incumbent utility at prices that are competitive and in most cases lower than the utility rates. Savings are as high as 15 to 20% according to the EPA. Sonoma Clean Power has, uh, been able to generate 62 million in customer savings and an eightfold increase in money invested in local clean energy projects. So, some very good benefits there. Lazard did a study, and they found that not only are utility scales solar and wind cheaper than fossil fuels, but in some scenarios, alternative energy costs have decreased to the point that they are now at or below the marginal cost of conventional energy generation. CCAs and the local government negotiating contracts today are in a much more favorable position than sticking with the contracts that were signed 20 years ago. What's, uh, happened with renewable energy costs, as I'm sure many of you are aware, is they've been decreasing very similar to the situation with computer chips and following Moore's Law, and decreasing in half by about every two years, and also becoming, doubling in efficiency every two years. So it's a very different economic environment now for renewable energy. Uh, the WR COG did a, um, study, and the expected savings-
Mr. Smith?
Yep.
Your time's up, sir.
Okay. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Margaret Meinke, to be followed by Pam Nelson.
Ms. Meinke, good evening to you.
Hi. Yes, my name's Margaret Meinke. I'm a resident of Temecula and a member of Sierra Club. I'm here to affirm the resolution for balanced energy. I'm very excited about this opportunity to affirm this. And I don't have a lot to add, but I just wanna repeat the last three main benefits that Scott was saying. There's an increased choice. That's always good. Number two is the cost savings, and number three is local economic development and local control. So we're excited to see the momentum for this balanced energy resolution and look forward to more discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
And the final speaker is Pam Nelson.
Good evening, Ms. Nelson.
I had a little bit more to say about the Community Choice Aggregate Plan. I was happy to see the resolution about balanced energy, and, um, I'm asking you to follow the leads of our San Diego and Inland Empire neighbors and join or form a Community Choice Aggregate or CCA. This gives local control and helps us fight our climate crisis. Um, I did wanna say something about the Diaz Road expansion, just because I'm so excited about that. Is that okay? Okay. Um, yeah, I'm hoping that the Marietta Creek Regional Trail can benefit a little bit, too, because it's right there along the same line. And, um, you may know that Lake Elsinore is working to connect the north end, um, so that one can bike or hike all the way to the ocean via the Santa Ana River. That connection would really, really be great. So if we could make the, um, trail more functional by modifying the bridges at Rancho California and Winchester so that, um, bikers and hikers wouldn't have to go across the road, you know, there's crosswalks, just go underneath, it would be really a great route. Um, and then I don't know if you can answer the question, what happens at Cherry, Cherry Street? I'm really curious.
Now's not the time to have the dialogue.
Okay.
But just for you to speak.
Yeah, okay.
All right.
Hey, thank you. Good to see you.
And good to see you as well. Any other speakers? Okay, so we'll move to council discussion. Is there any discussion on this item?
Move approval.
Second.
Um, go ahead and, uh, cast your vote. Let's see, who are we missing? I think maybe Councilmember Ron?
Mr. Mayor, I wanna make sure that, um, I'm registering an abstain from you?
Yes.
Okay, so an abstain from you, abstain from Matt Ron, and then approval from the other three.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And my abstention, just to let you know, is, is, I just, I believe in local control 100%, but there's some language in here that there seems to be some political parlaying between the electric company and between the gas company. And I'm not really certain as a city. I personally wanna say that there's climate change that we need to get behind. It's a very complicated issue. So, that's the only reason, so, why abstain, but 90% of this I could go for. Um, if Mr. Ron could come back in the room, you're quick.
I am.
Thank you.
Government efficiency.
That's right. Let's see. All right. All right, at this time, I'm going to recess the Temecula Community Services Dist, uh, excuse me, I'm gonna recess the Temecula City Council meeting in favor of the Temecula Community Services District meeting, and President James Stewart.
All right, a call to order, the Temecula Community Service District. Madam Secretary, please note, we're all here. Um, are there any public comments? No public comments. So, we only have one item, and that's item number 14, approve the action minutes of August 13th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that's five zero. Uh, directors' report.
Nothing tonight, Mr. President.
Nothing. General managers' report.
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right. Any directors' reports? None seen? I will adjourn this meeting until September 10th, 2019.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to call the meeting of the Successor Agency to the Temecula Redevelopment Agency. Madam City Clerk, the record reflects that we are all here. Do we have any public comments? All right, we have one item on the consent calendar, approve the joint action minutes of August 13th, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
That was a motion by Councilmember Edwards, second by Mayor Pro Tem Stewart. Please cast your vote. And that's five two zero. Mr. Executive Director, anything?
Nothing tonight.
Do my directors have anything to say?
Nope.
All right, then we're gonna adjourn this meeting until September the 10th. We are adjourned. Let's see here. Now I'm going to reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, going to the business portion of our agenda. Item 16, approve the traffic calming measures identified in the Red Hawk Parkway, Vale Ranch Parkway, traffic calming analysis. And Mr. City Attorney, did you wanna address this, or Mr. Ron, did you wanna address?
I'll, I'll let Peter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, item 16 of the, uh, Red Hawk Vale Ranch, uh, traffic calming, Councilmember Ron will not- Councilmember Ron will not participate in this matter because his home is within 300 feet of the improvements being recommended. So he'll have to step out on this one, too.
That's all right. That's the right way to do it.
All right. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers.
Just one second till he leaves. All right, we're good to go. Go for it.
Tonight, we're here to go over the Red Hawk Vale Ranch traffic calming analysis that we performed. And I'll try to go through it quickly so that you can understand everything that we pressed. And the goals of the study was to look at vehicular speeds and site distances, and figure out ways that we can make the road a little more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists, improve the flow and the backup that we have at several intersections, and improve the overall quality of life for the people out there on this roadway. And we wanted to do that by doing some effective options that have the least amount of impacts and cost. And so, as you all know, the existing conditions on this roadway is it's a 45 mile per hour divided highway with raised landscape medians, and it's got bike lanes and sidewalks and school crossings. And this is an example, and shows you where the traffic control measures are that are currently in place. We also took some data, and as you can see by the numbers, there's quite a bit of cars in the Pepper Corn to Vale Ranch road section, ranging up to 25,000 per day, while the rest of the loop is quite a bit less. And so we also did, we went out and measured the site distance at the 23 uncontrolled intersections, and we determined that several of those streets have less than desirable site distance at the current posted 45 mile an hour limit. The accident history was reviewed, and we looked at that and determined that it's not excessive. About 25% of those accidents were at the intersection of El Chima Sola before it was signaled. It's now been signaled, so that problem has gone away. The options that we're proposing are to re-stripe the road as a one lane in each direction. That's called a road diet. You've seen that before. We did that on La Serena, and it was very successful out there. We're also recommending that we reduce the speed limit along a major portion of the route to 40 miles per hour, install speed feedback signs and apply enforcement, and to add some stop control beacons or signal timing where needed. So this is a picture showing you the area that we propose to do the road diet on. This is the area that has the volumes that are only 3,000 to 11,000 per day compared to the other section that has more like 25,000. So one lane will be more than sufficient to handle the traffic in that area. And this will also do, besides just reducing to one lane for improved visibility, it'll create right turn-only lanes and acceleration lanes for people getting in and out of their tracks on the side streets. And we may also see, as like we did on La Serena, that the traffic speeds will come down. This is a picture showing what the configuration will look like. As you can see, it's the, one lane is in the center of the roadway and gives you the acceleration and right turn lanes on the outside portion, allowing the driver to creep forward as needed to see. The speed reduction to 40 miles per hour is an extra recommendation. And what we have is a situation where the current surveys that were done out there showed that the 85th percentile is 47. We're allowed to round down to 45. And then if there are conditions that are not readily apparent to the driver, we can take an additional five mile per hour engineering judgment. And that's what we're doing here. We have conditions out there like site distance that's not readily apparent to the driver going down the street, that that's being impaired. So we can use that, and that way there we can make the speed limit 40 miles per hour. We're looking to add some speed feedback signs enforcing the new limit. We're suggesting that if we don't adopt a road diet for any reason, that we would need to have an always-stop at Vale Ranch and Nickland where the site distance is less than desirable. And we're proposing a flashing, rectangular rapid flashing beacon, like we put in down by Great Oak High School at the school crossing there at Camino Rubano. The one other issue that we are recommending is for nighttime is what's called rest in red. And to explain what that is, is the signals would be, instead of at late at night being just sitting there in a green light as people can go up and down the road, they'll actually be sitting and resting in red light. And then when you finally slow down and hit the advanced detection, which is about 250 feet away, the light will trigger and turn to green and keep you going. So what it does is it allows you to bring the speeds down to about 35 or 40 miles per hour before the car can get a green light, and then they'll be able to proceed through. It doesn't mean you have to stop at every signal. We're proposing to improve the flow and the backup. And so one of those is at Pepper Corn. As you see by the numbers, the number of left turns during the peak six hours is greater than the number of through traffic that we have. So we're recommending that one lane be redesignated as a left turn pocket there to help relieve that situation. And this is a picture showing it's just a striping chain. So this is very minor and can be readily implemented. Finally, you know, the whole object of traffic calming is to help reduce speeds and provide, we're providing buffered bike lanes. We're improving the ingress and egress. We're making it easier for pedestrians, bicyclists, and schoolchildren to cross. We're improving the traffic flow, and we're enhancing the safety. So we think we're accomplishing the goals that we set out to on this study. Phase one is what we're recommending is that we pursue the 40 mile an hour speed limit, the always-stop if we don't do the road diet, and the dual left turns at Pepper Corn. Install the feedback signs and apply enforcement with our PDE. Modify the nighttime operation to rest in red, and install the flashing beacon at Camino Rubano. Phase two would be done later in the year, early spring of next year, and that would be to install the road diet and modify the striping at Vale Ranch and Red Hawk Parkway. And what we have there is just a little diagram kind of showing how the free right turn would be introduced into the number one lane, which would allow then the people at Villa Cordoba easier access to get in and out with that traffic being moved over by one lane there. And phase three requires some funding and other things to do. So we've got to get that in the CIP budget. So that would be to install a raised median at Villa Salteo and make that right turn in, right turn out. Left turns in allowed. And then modify the signal down at Wolf Valley to allow for the U-turns. And this is a little diagram showing the little median that would go in at Salteo. So these recommendations, they were presented to the HOA Board at their June 19 meeting. We also presented to the Public Safety Committee. We received positive comments and support from everyone that was in attendance. We've received a couple of resident comments since the reports have been put out in the public meetings. And a few of them were, you know, just basically to say, hey, what about just do enforcement first? Or, you know, why are we doing a road diet? You know, the typical kind of questions that we get. So we think that we can address all those readily. This was the implementation schedule we talked about. But basically, just try to get the phase one ones done by the end of the year, phase two by spring, and phase three would go into the budget. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much. Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart?
Yes. Okay, at the school crossing, you said there's going to be the flashing red, you know, pedestrian crossing thing?
It's actually, it's a pedestrian flashing yellow warning light. So what it does is when you press the button, it lets the driver know that there's somebody in the street that's crossing.
Are we going to require the school to have some sort of a monitor there? Because I could just see, because that's an elementary school, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. That it might cause a problem if you've got a bunch of kids hitting it all the time. You know, if there was someone there controlling it, especially during the school let-out hours and come-in hours, is that something we can request? That the school district have like a crossing guard that's going to actually be there to allow traffic to move through during, you know, when it starts backing up? Stop the kids, say, okay, let's let this group go through, and then press it again and walk through.
The answer is probably yes, but the good news is Rubano is a fair distance away from where the bulk of the kids are.
Okay.
So the number of kids going that direction is far less than the number that go the other way on the loop to go on home. So, you know, if that becomes a situation, that certainly can be looked at.
And one more question. Are there existing bike lanes right now on that entire road?
Yes.
Okay. So we're not adding bike lanes. We're just really just buffering them.
We're putting the buffer in, yes.
Which is going to create, well, the road diet, basically.
Correct.
And a safer route for bikers and kids even walking on sidewalks, perhaps? You know, is that the purpose there?
Correct. And it also allows the driver on the side streets to creep out further without having to have... The other thing the road diet does, too, that should be pointed out is that with having one lane of traffic, you're only having to make one judgment at a time. Okay, right now, you have four lanes of traffic approaching, two in one direction, two in the other direction. And so you have to figure out what those four cars approaching are doing, and try to decide if you have a sufficient gap to pull out in front. It's extremely much simpler even you have a road diet, because now it's one lane approaching on one side of a raised median. So you really only have to do is get across that one lane to the left, and then get out to the middle, and then you're going to make a second judgment. So it's a much easier pattern to exit. And that, so... And the other benefit, of course, of the road diet is that if Jerry over there goes 37 down the road, guess what everybody else is going to be doing that's behind them? They're going to go 37, too, because they can't pass. And that, so the road diet takes away the high-speed passing, which is a real key.
Right.
Councilmember Edwards.
You know, we have issues sometimes with motorcycles not being able to trip the loops. So when we do the resting red, are they effective for approaching motorcycles as well? Because they have such a small magnetic footprint.
Well, that's, again, just an adjustment to the sensitivity on the loop detection. So, you know, we would take that into consideration.
Okay, because I know we have a lot of, you know, our military, a lot of our military commuters that go back and forth to Camp Pendleton ride motorcycles, and they leave very early in the morning. And so it could be a long time before that light would ever turn for them if it doesn't, if the sensors aren't properly adjusted.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yep.
Very good. Okay. Thank you.
Welcome.
Do we have any requests to speak? Okay, so we'll move right into council discussion.
Mayor Niggar, if I could just quickly...
Of course.
And I should have done this before, but I wanted to introduce the speaker. Our speaker was, his name's Steve Liebring. He's with Willdan Engineering. They're our traffic engineering consultant, and they actually prepared the study of the traffic conditions and the traffic calming options that we're looking at for the loop.
Thank you very much. Council discussion, if any. If none...
Move approval.
I'll second that.
That was Edwards on the motion, Swank on the second. Please cast your votes. And that passes 4-0. With Mr. Ron outside the council chambers abstaining, but he's back now, and we're better for it.
And Mr. Mayor, if you wanted to let the students know that slips are available in the back, if they would like to stay, they're more than welcome, but they can get their slips in the lobby.
Sounds good. I think you just did. But you can, you can stay if you'd like. I'm going to wait till the room clears. All right. Item 17, approve a resolution adopting the Mills Act program at the request of Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart. Who's going to give this staff report? Oh, hi there.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Niggar and members of the council. I am here tonight to present the proposed Mills Act program at the request of Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart. The Mills Act is an economic incentive program in California for the restoration and preservation of qualified historic buildings by private property owners. Implemented by the state in 1972, the Mills Act grants participating local governments the authority to enter into contracts with owners of historic properties who actively participate in the rehabilitation, restoration, preservation, and maintenance of their historic properties. Qualified property owners receive property tax relief from the county with the intent that the property tax relief may offset some of the rehabilitation costs. A Mills Act program is beneficial to the city because it can help preserve the city's historic and cultural resources and enrich a sense of place and understanding of our history. To qualify for the Mills Act program, a building must first be designated by the city of Temecula as a historic structure in the Temecula Local Historic Preservation District. The exhibit above, which is referenced in the Old Town specific plan, demonstrates the historic structures within Old Town that are eligible for the program. In addition, there are several properties outside of Old Town that would qualify the program as seen in this exhibit. In total, there are about 22 eligible properties within the city. Once a property has been designated on the city's local historic preservation district and is applied for participation in the Mills Act program, the property is subject to the rules and regulations of the Office of Historic Preservation and Departments of Parks and Recreation, the U.S. Secretary of the Interior Standards for Rehabilitation, and the Historic Building Code. The owner must protect, maintain, rehabilitate the property for the length of the contract. A 10-year property improvement plan is required as part of the application and will be evaluated by the city. Property owners will be advised to consult with the Temecula Valley Historical Society for the development of their property improvement plan. The applicant must also obtain all required permits for their rehabilitation work. Participants of the Mills Act program must enter into a historical property preservation agreement for the city. Specific terms of these preservation agreements may be negotiated with each owner, but I will outline the general terms for the proposed program. According to state law, a preservation agreement has a minimum term of 10 years. An agreement is renewed automatically each year on its anniversary date, effectively in perpetuity. Oops. Sorry about that.
Hold on one second. Is that 1909, that building?
Yeah.
Unbelievable.
Isn't that fun? Okay. Sorry about that. Sorry about that. So as I always mention, according to state law, a preservation agreement has a minimum term of ten years and it's automatically renewed on its anniversary date, effectively in perpetuity. Preservations agreements are transferred to new owners when the property is sold and the new owner would also receive the full benefit of the agreement as the agreement is attached to the property. Failure to rehabilitate the property may cause cancellation of the preservation agreement and a penalty equalling twelve point five percent of fair market value. And this is according to the California Government Code. Property owners are required to submit an annual report to the city indicating work completed per the ten-year property improvement plan. City staff will conduct a property inspection prior to entering into the preservation agreement with a property owner to review the proposed implementation of the improvement plan. City staff will also conduct property inspections at a minimum of every five years to examine the progress made towards the ten-year property improvement plan. And then depending on the nature of the rehab, inspections may also be required by the county assessor, state office of historic preservation, or the state board of equalization. If an agreement is terminated prior to the end of the term, the property taxes will increase gradually to the pre-Mills Act program level. Because the new assessed property tax is calculated by the county assessor, it is difficult to determine the exact impact this program would have on the city's general fund. Rate reductions are roughly based on the property tax values based on pre-proposition thirteen. Properties that have been owned for a considerable amount of time usually do not benefit from the Mills Act programs because their property taxes are already relatively low compared to those that have been more recently purchased. The city can make no guarantee of any potential tax savings as a result of a property tax, of a property owner's request to enter into their agreements. An analysis of property tax revenues for all eligible properties, so all twenty-two of them, estimates that a maximum loss of property tax to the city's general fund is six thousand seven hundred and nine dollars a year. Not too much. After a review of other communities that administer Mills Act programs, staff found application fees for the program range from approximately three hundred dollars to three thousand dollars. It is recommended that staff complete a full analysis for the fiscal impact of the Mills Act program and bring to the city council at a future date for consideration. So with that, staff recommends three things. First, adopt a resolution establishing a Mills Act program. Direct staff to draft an agreement with the Temecula Valley Historical Society to act in an advisory capacity for the Mills Act program. And direct staff to conduct a fee analysis of the Mills Act program to be brought back to city council at a future date. That concludes my presentation and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to add anything to that staff report?
Well, yeah, the reason why I had several of the property owners come to me and basically open my eyes to this. And I do know older building, historical buildings are very maintain, very high maintenance. And so if we can offer them any kind of opportunity to keep these buildings up, because it is an important part of our town, these old historic buildings, we don't have a ton of them. So we definitely don't want to lose a single one of them. So that was my reasoning for bringing this before the council is I really think we need to give these property owners every opportunity to be successful with these properties, so.
Thank you. Questions? Councilmember Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So someone can answer that we typically, the city has not been the agency to bestow or designate historic buildings in the past. That was kind of left to the historical society to submit applications to the proper jurisdictions, correct?
Actually, the city is the final destination for the city's historic designation. So properties would be brought forth as potentially historic and as long as there's documentation, they would have made it on to, in this case, the Old Town Specific Plan, which is where the historic buildings are actually codified into the code on the city's register. So the city actually is the keeper of the historic registry.
Okay, all right, because I thought, well, maybe we're talking about federal designations at some point or something, but okay, that makes it clear.
So just to be clear, there are state designations and federal designations, but we keep a city designation as well.
Okay, well, I knew we did when we did the Old Town Specific Plan, but I didn't know if this would also, you know, apply in the same way.
Right, it does.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? I have a couple. Do we have a criteria for what's historic?
The criteria is if it's on the historic preservation list, so it's that those exhibits. So this outside of Old Town, these properties outside of Old Town, and then these properties within Old Town. So just as long as they're on that list, they are eligible for the program.
So in the action item, we're asking you to come back with a resolution declaring these properties on that list?
Those are already on the list. The resolution is establishing the Mills Act program itself.
And what was the criteria for them to get on the list?
The criteria was, I'm not, I don't think we have a specific criteria. I think we worked with the historical society, other stakeholders in the community, and the council at that time to determine what was and what wasn't historic and these items, or these buildings actually made it on to the list at that time.
Okay, so I like the idea, but again, what's the criteria? I understand you've said that these properties are on the list, but what was the criteria to get on the list?
To get on the historic list?
Is it, yeah, is it just our opinion, the council's opinion at the time? Is it, does it have to be ten years, fifteen, twenty, thirty, forty, a hundred years old? Does it have to have significance in history? What qualifies something as being historic?
Well, I don't think we have a formalized list or program to determine something that is historic or not. Not to my knowledge. We would have worked with the historic society at the time. I wasn't involved in that at that time, but we don't have, to my knowledge, anything to my knowledge that's a formalized process to determine something that's historic or not.
Okay. And this sort of leads to the next one. And I, we're questioning, we're going to go into comments here in a second and I may even drift into that area. But, but does said designation affect the neighboring properties? In other words, by a property being placed on the historic rolls, you may have somebody with a similar property next door doesn't want to be on the historic roll. So what, how do we, how does that get reconciled?
Are you asking regarding like values, property values, things like that? How does it affect it that way?
Land use in particular. They come in for a discretionary permit, somebody sees something as historical, another person doesn't. But the building next door is historical and it's the exact same thing. Okay, and it's the exact same building, but the owner of that one doesn't want it historical.
Well, the city, the city council would be responsible for making that designation at the time if it made it that far. The neighboring properties' historic designation would have no bearing on the, no technical bearing in land use and approvals process on a neighboring property.
It would be analyzed during the sequo analysis if it was applicable.
I got that. I guess what I'm looking for is some criteria, and we'll get into that when we get into discussion. Let me just hold that thought for a second. Any other comments or rather questions? Questions?
Just one. So, so real quick. So we talked about, you know, the city being able to make these designations and then in Marian's comments, there is that conversation of state or federal. And we don't, we don't have any of those buildings here. Do any of our buildings qualify for state or federal registry at all?
You know, that I do not know. We do have representatives from the historical society, they may know. And also if they are on that registry, they also qualify for this program, even if they're not on ours.
And the only reason I ask is too, so if we create, you know, a Mills Act program in town and have these, you know, properties end up on, you know, at least our own registry of sorts, does that instigate any, you know, potential opportunities or, you know, requests for listing at the state or federal level? And does that interfere potentially with certain property rights of a variety of owners at those levels? Because it becomes more restrictive of what you can do to properties under different, you know, listing criterias beyond just our local. And so, you know, so I just need to know if there's, you know, if there's been, you know, because I know like the city of Riverside has a pretty aggressive, very successful program with a lot of this, you know, very proud, I think, of what they've been able to accomplish there. But, you know, have there been any cases where you see these sort of subsequent, you know, changes to property rights because of, you know, proposed state or federal listings?
Well, in these, in this case, property owners are opting into the program. So they're not required to enter into the Mills Act program. And actually, as you probably heard, the requirements are pretty onerous. So it is restricting property rights, but they are electing to do so. And if at any point the property owner wants to terminate the contract, they just have to give the city notice and they can do so at the end of the ten-year contract period. There's no penalty, but if it's before that, there will likely be a penalty. So I guess in summary, they're choosing for their property rights to be a little bit restricted because they have to abide by those standards.
But is there a nexus, and you know, Peter, Luke, I don't know if you know the answer to that, but is there a nexus between, you know, what may occur at a local level from, you know, a Mills Act, you know, designation to, you know, something that could, you know, potentially occur, spiral out, you know, based off of a state or federal request for listing, you know, you know, of those properties, you know? And does it, obviously it becomes more restrictive and there's, you know, additional things on. But, you know, does creating this program put, you know, property rights at risk at a different level?
It's hard to speculate as to what may or may not occur. But what I will say is there are criteria for the state and the federal designation. So if somebody wants to have a property designated, there's a process that has to be followed to look at all the historical documents, look at why it's historical, and there are criteria in state and federal law to do that. Again, as Ms. Laner pointed out, the Mills Act program that you're voting on tonight is simply to alter the property tax structure to provide money for the property owners to maintain and repair their buildings and they opt into it. So they are not, you know, fighting the city. The city can't impose the Mills Act requirements against their will.
But are you aware of any, you know, cases where you've seen, you know, yeah, something sort of spiral out of control after, you know, you know, designation, you know, by a city that inspires them?
Okay, that's all I wanted to know. It would come from somebody saying, we think this building is historical. And then the property owner says, no, we don't think so. So you have to go through the analysis and the public hearings and the debate over whether or not it should be, you know, added to the state or federal register.
Oh, go ahead, go ahead.
You know, that's the process the city went through several years ago as to designating the Old Town structures historical as part of the Old Town Specific Plan.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Stewart.
And that was, that was going to be my point. I believe a lot of these buildings that would probably take advantage of the Mills Act are structures that are designated and can't be altered anyways. So what we're trying to do is give them the opportunity to maintain these buildings at the level and the quality that we as Temecula want to see out of these buildings. I mean, we want to see, you know, these buildings maintained to a level that we can be proud of when tourists come into this town. And so that really is the nexus of this whole discussion is just giving these people the opportunity to take that money that would have gone to the county. It's, as you can see, it's only sixty-seven hundred dollars to the city. But the majority of that money is actually going to other entities that can be reinvested in our community, in our history. And so that's why this is important to me, but.
Marian Edwards.
So we've established that there really isn't a criterion for determining what is historic and what isn't. I mean, you know, it's like the gentleman that said, I don't know much about art, but I know what I like. So anytime, and this now brings it down to a matter of financial interest on the part of property owners. And it's great. I mean, I think, I think it's a great idea. But if we are without criteria, how do we then determine which properties that may not qualify? How do we tell them that they don't qualify? And if there are two similar properties and one, you know, is close for some reason and does qualify and the other one is very similar but doesn't qualify? I think we need to set, I think we need to set criteria so that the city, it keeps the city safe.
Keep it at a question, right?
So there's nothing that provides for that, correct? At this point?
No, I think we need to clarify, we need to go back a little bit and clarify. There are, I think, twenty-two properties already designated in the Old Town Specific Plan as qualifying if they want to take part in the Mills Act program, if the Mills Act is enacted tonight. They already exist. So there will be no, there's no process, there's no, we're not proposing to allow individual property owners or individuals to come in and say, hey, I think my property is historic. No, it's already designated in the Old Town Specific Plan.
We think, we're attempting to share that the maximum exposure as we know it today is twenty-two properties and we don't believe a hundred percent of those property owners are going to take advantage of the program because of the rigors of the criteria. But we're not here tonight establishing criteria for what is historic and what is not.
Thank you. But then I think we need a little clarity. You clarified some things there, but, but, so we're excluding the rest of the city and anybody else who would want to participate in the Mills Act?
As of right now, yes.
There's no other properties that are eligible under the criteria for the Mills Act, other than the twenty-two that we shared.
I'm not messing with you, but how do you know? It's an honest question. How do you know if there's no criteria?
Well, these are the twenty-two properties, as I understand them, that are listed and on the local historic register. So we're going off of the register as our inventory of property.
For the entire city.
For the entire city.
Most of them are in Old Town.
Right.
There are five, I believe, five or six that are citywide. Can you pull the map back up Lynn? The citywide map.
Okay, go ahead, put the map back up. Okay. Did you want to speak further to that or? I don't want to, go ahead, Mary.
So I'm trying to get this straight. So, Mr. City Manager, you said according to the criteria, there are only twenty-two. But then we say there is no criteria. So this is the criteria that was just established for Old Town?
The criteria is that they're located on the list that's in the specific plan. That's the criteria to be eligible for the Mills Act.
And how did they get on that list?
The city council adopted the specific plan and placed them on the list at that time.
With no criteria?
Well, the criteria was the work that was done in the years-long lead-up to the Old Town Specific Plan being adopted that included working with the historical society, working with members of the community, subcommittees, a whole host of different things that took place that led to those twenty-two properties being listed on the Old Town Specific Plan Historic Registry List.
Okay, so what we're doing tonight precludes anyone who lives, let's say, on the outskirts of the city, still in the city limits, maybe in an old residence or has an old barn on their property or something. It precludes them from coming to the city and saying, hey, my thing, my barn has been standing here since eighteen ninety-five?
They could, so the Mills Act and if something is historic are two completely separate issues for the purposes of this conversation. If someone has a barn that's truly historic, they could petition the city to get on the list. But they would have to go through the process. They'd have to come to the city council and, yes, we don't have a formalized process right now for what are the criteria to get on the list. But they could come make a case to get on the list, the Old Town Specific Plan, and they could be placed on the list if they were, you know, if it was determined they were truly historic and somehow through all the vetting that took place previously, they never made it on the list.
Okay, except we don't know what historic means.
Because there was a lot of work done with the historical society and everyone to truly drill down and find out what is actually historic in town.
No, I believe you and I remember when that was done. I just, now that we're doing it and we're tying it to a savings in property tax, it kind of takes on new meaning. And so, not that we weren't careful and the historical society wasn't careful, but I don't ever like to leave the city exposed for, you know, if somebody could come forward and say, well, what does historic mean?
Can I make a proposal suggestion?
Sure.
Perhaps with our fee study that we're bringing back and our agreement to work as an advisory with the historic society, we bring back a proposal for a formalized process and criteria for what determines historic properties.
Right now we're asking questions, so hold that thought. Did you have any more questions?
I would just add to that, the city may not have a specific criteria in the municipal code or in the general plan or the specific plan for Old Town, but the state has very clear criteria. And those tie into sequo. So if a property comes in and somebody says, we think that property is historical, you have to do a sequo analysis and so you'd go to the state law and the state regulations that does have criteria. Now, back how many, ever many years ago when all those properties were designated, there really wasn't any disagreement as to whether or not they were or were not. You know, if somebody comes in now and says, we want to historical declaration and people say, well, it's really not historical, then you would need to go to the state criteria, the state law, and probably enact your own set of criteria to specifically deal with that issue.
And I'm okay with that.
Yeah, so nobody is precluded from coming in to ask for historical designation if they think their property is historic and you go through the analysis and determine that it is.
Any other questions? Put the map back up real quick. I'm just curious. So we're dealing with codification in the Old Town Specific Plan. So how did Vale Ranch, Castle Loma, Wolf Tomb, how did all those make that into the Old Town Specific Plan?
The way that, the way that was done specifically was we needed a place to codify the list. We thought it'd be good to do it in the Old Town Specific Plan because most of the historic structures are actually in Old Town and because the Old Town Local Review Board acts as the historic appropriateness body for not only Old Town, but for the entire city. So that's the only responsibility that that body has beyond Old Town. It's to oversee any developments or changes to historic structures in town.
Okay, thank you. And then one last question. We get very little property tax. The impact to the city is extremely minimal. Where's the county weigh in on this?
So interestingly, the county does not weigh in on this. Local jurisdictions get to implement a Mills Act program and the county does not have a say in it.
Okay, so at the risk of being funny, why don't we just start calling everything in the Mills Act and keeping all the property taxed local?
If we don't have a criteria.
I'm not being facetious, I'm just saying that with a lack of criteria, it just sort of seems like, just do my whole neighborhood. And we can all improve our homes. How does that work?
How does it work that we don't designate the whole neighborhood?
Maybe it's a rhetorical question.
And if enough people did it, the county would weigh in.
You kind of see where I'm, there's nothing wrong with the program, it just has some holes in it and we can fix the holes. Let's, we'll work on that. So any more questions for staff? Okay, sounds good. We have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we do have one speaker, Rebecca Farnbach.
How did I know she was gonna speak? Rebecca, good evening to you. I bet you're just like chomping at the bit there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilpeople, and thank you for the words of wisdom, Mr. Thorson and Mr. Watson, that you gave. You were, you two are very clear on what's going on, and it's frustrating to me. I'm sitting there, I know most of the answers, and I just have to hold myself back. Now, I'm speaking for the Temecula Valley Historical Society. I am Rebecca Farnbach, and I live in Temecula. I'm the past president. Our current president was not able to come. She is out of town. Okay. The beginning of designating these historic properties happened before cityhood. There was a huge inventory of historic properties done by the Women's Club in Temecula prior to cityhood in the nineteen seventies. I have a copy of it. It was done on behalf of Riverside County. That's why they got designated. It's not because I wanted to have a historical property. Oh, this neighbor says, "No, no, no." None of that, none of that, none of that. I have a copy of it. It's when it was hand typed. It has photographs that were glued onto pieces of paper. Okay? Got it? That's designated. The Historical Society stands by those properties. We are not looking to add anything else to it. I have personally reviewed it, and there is no idea of adding, adding anything at all to it. We are happy. I mentioned a property that needed to be looked at perhaps on Deportola Road. I have since found out that it's not really an important historic property. I had spoken to Luke about it at one point. Uh, back when Eve Craig was president of the newly-founded Historical Society in the early two thousands, she and my husband, Daryl Farnbach, went over the whole list again with a fine-tooth comb, and I believe Luke, I think that's what was adopted as the Old Town specific plan historic structures. Does that resonate at all with what your recollection is? And then, that was embraced by the city of, um, the city council. At one point, too, it was, um, those properties that were recognized on that list by the Temecula Women's Club was endorsed by the county of Riverside. I have some old newspaper articles about it, um, prior to cityhood. I'd have to look for it. So, I hope that's been helpful. And I want to thank you in advance. I believe you will vote for the Mills Act, and the reason you need to is not just because we want beautification in our town, but it's also because this is our children's hometown. This is a place of pride. We want to give them touchstones of the past that they can understand where they're coming from. You know, we have a source of, of knowing who we are from what our family roots are, but we also have a gift and a, a legacy that we need to give to our, our children and our community. And so, that's what motivates us. And I'd like you to see, um, in the front two rows here, most of the people sitting there are part of the Temecula Valley Historical Society. We are pledging, in response to your voting for the Mills Act, we will give you, we will dedicate our free time to help implement it. So, we have already sat with some of you, and we have said, "We will help contact those property owners who are eligible." And by the way, I have done that, and about six of them are interested. There are about five maybes, and some don't care, and many of those properties aren't even taxable entities. They're churches or city-owned properties. So, I'm, I'm just appealing to you. I, I want you to help us do this. If we, um, go ahead and do, pass the Mills Act, the Historical Society not only will re-contact those same six people and the maybe five more people, we will go alongside them. We will save you administrative time and expense. We will help them fill out their, their applications. We will make sure that they are eligible. Um, there are some things like they can't be, um, uh, they need to have paid their taxes on time and everything. And then, we will help you monitor to make sure that those tax savings are put back into the property as the Mills Act demands. So, we will help you do assessments. We will take photographs. We will do reports. And if someone needs guidance, who is a property owner who has the Mills Act, we will help guide them and say, "You know what? You need to do this. I see you haven't done it." So, we're pledging our support, and if you will just pass this act. So, do you have any questions for me?
You know what? You're perfect. Your, your time just ran out to the second. Yeah, there are some questions, but I do want to, um, preface the questions. Rebecca, no one would ever doubt your sincerity, nor the work that you have done in the area of historical presence, uh, preservation, you and your husband, and members of your club. So, I just want to make that clear as we question you. I think you're on a path to a good idea. We just got to get there because we're dealing with something bigger and way into the future. So, let us work on it. You stay right there. Question, Ms. Edwards.
So, I agree. I mean, I think it's a great idea. I think it's a way to protect our existing buildings. We have adopted all the buildings that came as, you know, from the county of Riverside and for valid reasons, and we know which ones are historic. But we have to think, like, as Mayor said, we have to think bigger than that. So, we have to think in the future, what if someone else comes forward and challenges the city? And it happens. You think it can't happen, but it does happen. Um, and, and tying something to property taxes, um, just makes it even more likely that something will happen. But even if it doesn't happen, we still have to protect the city in those instances. So, that's the conversation I think we're having now, is how do we put something in place, even though there wasn't anything formal in place in the past, other than what was determined by the county and with the help of the Historical Society, and again, thank you very much, we have to do something to protect the city in the future in case that happens. It's not going to have any impact on the, the previously designated, uh, properties. So, that is my, my whole point. Um, and that's why we, I kept having to say, you know, I heard the word "criteria," and then I heard there wasn't criteria. So, it can be confusing if you don't know the entire history, and like you do, and you know the history in your sleep. So, um, that's what I think we're trying to do. I want to make sure.
A question in there?
No, how are you this evening? That is your question.
I'm great, thank you so much. And I'm fired up, and I just really want to see this happen.
Let's keep it at questions. Dr. Ron.
So, I, I, maybe this may, this is more of a question for, for Luke than, than, than you, but, you know, I mean, you mentioned a few things that actually raised more red flags for me than, than alleviated my concerns. Um, you know, and you said things like, you know, helping with city monitoring and accountability and program monitoring. Those are all governmental functions, not to, you know, discount the importance of the Historical Society, but that needs to be, you know, purely a city function with your organization and advisory because that, and, and again, if we're going to do these things, then we need to have very clear criteria and set that standard and have, you know, those, you know, like you're saying, this criteria clearly defined, not a program that's run, you know, part and parcel by the Historical Society. So, I just want, you know, Luke, if you could comment on that and make sure I'm, I'm okay here.
Oh, no, you're absolutely right, and, and I appreciate Mrs. Farnbach's enthusiasm, and we're definitely going to be a great partner together, but the role of the Historic Society is actually very limited. It'll be an advisory role to help applicants in their application process, getting the documents in order to be submitted to the city. Um, all of the compliance work, all of the contract administration, all of the, um, site visits, all of that will be a city function entirely handled by staff.
Okay, thanks.
And if I can comment, that was a bargaining, um, thing that we had discussed prior, in, in prior meetings. How much would the Historical Society be willing to do? And those are items that we discussed prior to being here this evening. So, if we were relieved, great.
I certainly appreciate it, you know, and your willingness to help, but, you know, but that's, that needs, I think, to be reserved as a governmental function.
Great. Less for us to have to do. Thank you.
Very good. We're still in questions. Mayor Protem Stewart.
So, a lot has been said about criteria. And so, and I'm sure you all have a criteria of what is historic in Temecula. So, you know what's historic. So, there is a criteria that you guys use, correct?
We are basing it on the Women's Club inventory that was done in the nineteen seventies. I think it was nineteen seventy-seven.
Okay, so, it's buildings and things that were, and, and again, what criteria did they use? See, I'm trying to drill this out of you so they can understand exactly what criteria determines-
Provenance, provenance of the properties, provenance of the building structures.
Okay. Is there a time limit? Was anything built before nineteen fifty bef-
There were things that were built before nineteen fifty and so on, but not everything built before nineteen fifty made the list.
Right, right, yeah.
So, it, it was basically who the pioneer families and the early families in Temecula, what they honored, what they respected as, as being old. And it, I don't know if we need to at some point have a committee that would sit down and study those. Um, I, I'd be happy to bring the lists. And by the way, there are two properties in Temecula that are, um, up for National Historic Registry of Historic Places. Um, Dick Fox and I have been working on the one for, um, Vale Headquarters, and, um, uh, Richard Beck has been working on it for Hotel Temecula. And whenever you, um, go through that process, you become a state-registered site if you're approved for national, and it's an automatic state one. People don't generally seek state or county recognition. There are some county-recognized historic sites, but very few. Um, in the Temecula area, the whole Old Town district appears to be, um, considered historic.
Anything else?
So, we're still at questions, right?
We're still at questions. Are you still questioning?
I'm done.
You're done. Anybody else right now with questions? Thank you, Ms. Farnbach.
And thank you for the opportunity.
Yeah, and you know, you may get called back up, so just hang, hang tight there. All right, now, we can move to discussion. I, I do, I'm going to set the table a little bit, just for, for the discussion, um, because I'm hearing criteria, um, and I, I need my colleagues to weigh in on this. Um, just about every barn in Los Ranchitos is forty, fifty years old. Um, if you were to go ask that association, they would say that it's historic to their community. There's another aspect of this. It's fifty years from now, what's historic? So, with that, I'd like to have a discussion. Uh, Dr. Ron.
Yeah, I mean, you, you know, you hit exactly the, the concern I have, which is, you know, in, in the nineteen seventies, our definition of historic is, is certainly different four decades later, right? And it's certainly going to be different, you know, four decades from now as we're contemplating this. And so, I, I, you know, I, I'm sure there's something we can glean out of the work that was done by the, you know, Historical Society and the, um, and the folks in the nineteen seventies, but, you know, but I think it's not, it's not, it's not our only guiding principles on this. And so, you know, the only thing I, I think we really need to savvy here at this point is, is to make sure that there's, you know, there's a clear definition of what we consider and something that's flexible to account for, you know, where we're going to be fifty or a hundred years from now as well. Um, you know, so, I, you know, I don't know how we, you know, ask staff to, you know, put that together, but I think that needs to be part of, you know, whatever decision is made here tonight.
Councilmember Edwards.
And when you're dealing with issues like this, there's always going to be a subjective piece to it. So, and that's the part where somebody says, you know, "What's historic?" Well, we can say it was built, you know, before a certain time, or from the point that we're, you know, fifty years from now, we're going to be looking back, and if it has, if it's so old at that point, what, what determines whether it's historic? But then you get into the, the immeasurable value of the families that contributed to, the pioneer families, and we all know who they are. Um, you can look on the rock, you can look in the books, you can look in the, and you've looked at all of that. So, I just pick up your books, and that way I know who the families are, because I know you've done your research. So, we can look that way, but then we have to determine what constitutes a pioneer family. If we're going to have a subjective piece to that, we have to kind of decide what the boundaries of that subjectivity are, um, and it's going to take, it's going to take somebody's opinion eventually, and it'll take a consensus of opinion of a group of people, uh, that what constitutes, um, that added piece that you really can't measure in value, and that would be the thing like the families. So, um, we can establish the criteria of the, you know, the hard, the hard facts. That's going to be the, the easy part. I think the tough part is what the women's, the work that the Women's Club and the Historical Society has typically done for us, and they've established that historic piece, that subjective piece, that what really is valuable and important to us. And, you know, again, I say, you know, I, I don't know anything about art, but I know what I like. I don't know anything about history, but I know the families that contributed to making Temecula what it is today. So, I mean, I do know about history, but I'm using that as an example. So, that's the, that's the difficult piece. So, some of it, we have to establish, you know, just hard and fast rules, I think, knowing that there's going to be some subjectivity to it.
Any other? Go ahead, Mayor Protem Stewart, and then we'll go to Councilmember Schwank.
Okay. So, from what I get of this meeting right here, this is to establish the Mills Act for the twenty-two properties that are available to be on the Mills Act roll. It has nothing to do with any future properties, and I think that is something we as a city council could take on to establish that criteria, to determine if there's anything that was left out, or since then, like Mary Ann was saying, there might be something that's built in Temecula today that fifty, sixty, seventy years from now may want to apply for the Mills Act because it's been determined it was a tipping point in the, uh, culture of Temecula. So, um, but, but as of for this discussion tonight, it's really about the Mills Act for the twenty-two that have already been put on the historic roll in Temecula. It really has nothing to do with any future buildings or future properties. Now, that's something I think we as a city council should, should take into consideration to determine what that will be, what the criteria might be, but we can't look into the future, so...
But, and, and I have a comment for that. So, there's always the possibility that, that someone who would want to file could come in and challenge the city. How did you determine? How was it determined that those were historic properties, and why doesn't mine qualify? And that's what we're talking about. We may be setting a precedent. Is that, Peter, am I correct or not correct?
Um, the, the Mills Act resolution that you would be adopting tonight is, just as Council, Mayor Protem Stewart said, it only applies to the twenty-two properties that are listed in the Old Town specific plan as historic properties. So, those have already been designated. Uh, the time to challenge those has passed.
Okay, there's the answer right there.
Yeah, there's the answer to that right there. The, but if somebody comes in and says, "Gee, I, I would like to take advantage of the Mills Act. Would you please put my property on to the historic list?" Then you would start a process, looking at the state criteria, looking, which is fairly explicit, and make the determination, and the action would be to amend the Old Town specific plan to add a property. So, that's how you would deal with future properties, or somebody who says, "I want to be involved, and I'm not on the list of twenty-two."
So, you said it when you said what hadn't been said. The time has passed.
That's correct.
And so, that makes a difference for me, plus the fact that it's okay for us to establish criteria from here forward for those people who may come forward in the future.
Right. And I would also point out that, that when you, if you want the staff to come back with criteria, the first place we start is with the state regulations and the state statutes. You know, those are pretty explicit.
Councilmember Schwank.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so, I think Councilmember Edwards and, and Peter just sort of hammered that out for me. Like, I'm pretty comfortable with what we're voting on here tonight. That's, it's pretty simple, straightforward. Um, but I, I do think we need to, for that future generation, for that future council, to set some specific criteria for this program so that it isn't taking advantage of it in a negative way. Um, you know, that might happen, and we need to make sure that that doesn't happen. But for what we're voting on tonight, I'm extremely comfortable with the way it's set up.
Councilmember Ron.
Well, I mean, I, I guess I am, but maybe I'm not, because we still have twenty-two properties that we've said, you know, we're willing to designate, but we still haven't defined the criteria of those properties, aside from what was done in the nineteen seventies. So, you know, if, if, at a minimum of what we're doing today, if we could at least just have the staff, as this designation is voted on, just provide some additional clarity, work with the Historical Society, just so we have that list at least, because we're not working with that list right now. You know, I think collectively, we've all said, "These twenty-two properties qualify for the Mills Act. Great," based on a criteria that we don't have defined for us or in front of us right now, right? And so, I mean, and that's been part of our, our conversation this evening. So, I don't have an issue voting for this tonight, absent, I think, staff and the Historical Society, at least filling in that gap, or making that commitment to fill in that gap, so that, you know, if we ever do take this up, or if another property owner does come forward and says, you know, "I'd like to be, you know, a, a part of a future consideration," or whatever it is, then at least we, we don't have to go back to this, this night and this conversation and say, "So, what were we talking about, and who did what in the nineteen seventies, and where are these documents?" I mean, let's just fill in the gaps right now of what we've, uh, what we've been talking about. about.
Mayor Protem Stewart.
Well, I believe the twenty-two properties did meet a criteria. That's why they're on the Old Town Specific Plan. I mean, there was a criteria developed for that purpose, to put those twenty-two properties in that bank of properties that we wanna protect.
And I'm sure there is, and I'm, and I'm understanding that part of it was based off of what was done, you know, in the nineteen seventies, and what was done during the development of the, but we don't have any of that in front of us, and that's not part of the administrative record that we're establishing tonight, right? And that's all I'm saying, is that if we're going to do this, let's at least have the commitment by the Historical Society and city staff to just fill in that gap of the administrative record.
Councilmember Edwards.
The other point being is, I always wanna be prepared to defend the decisions that, the decision that I have made, and it also protects the Mills Act that we're adopting. We don't want anybody to be able to come back and say, you know, I'm gonna challenge your decision, and I don't want that to happen. So, I want these properties to maintain this designation and stay protected the way they are. So, that is what you're talking about. You know, we always need to be ready to defend the city's position and why we came to this conclusion, and I think we can't always just say things like, well, that's just the way we've always done it, or that's because this group of people back in the nineteen seventies said these buildings were important. And I don't disagree with that, but I don't know if that's gonna be court or not. So, we always have to be prepared to defend our position and to defend the decision that we made, in order to keep it valid.
You know, Councilmember Edwards, I expect you to be on this council for the next twenty years.
Thank you.
Twenty years after that, you know, is your site historical, because of your service to the city? And is whoever owns your home entitled to funds, you know, and property?
And whoever's taking care of us, yeah.
Well, yeah, if you're still around at that time, God bless you, but I'm being facetious only because with the lack of criteria, that's where it goes. You need a criteria. God bless Councilmember Roberts, okay? He's got a library named after him. You could say he was a pioneer. I'm sure the Women's Club back in the seventies looked at that, but it was very subjective. Do not know what that criteria was. It was the selection of a fabulous woman's club in the seventies, who probably did a whole lot of good work. Where do you go with that? And yet, at the same time, I think the council wants to pass it, so let's sort of craft something that gets where we need to go. So, this is what I'm hearing. We need a criteria?
Right.
Okay? We also like the idea of the Mills Act. Is that, is that a fair statement? We like the ideas of the Mills Act. We need a criteria. Let's just discuss right now the twenty-two properties that are in the Old Town Specific Plan. Frankly, I don't, going on in the future, I don't know if the Old Town SP and an SP amendment is the place to start to put them.
I agree.
It just, it seems to be a little bit more broader than that. I understand why it may have been done in the past, but moving forward in the future. So, let me clarify some things as we're moving along. Tonight, Luke, you want, your, your desire is to bring back a Mills Act program, correct?
Tonight is to approve the actual program itself, and then a recommendation to come back with a fee analysis for an application fee, and for an agreement to work with Historical Society as an advisor.
Okay, all right. So, in relation to the twenty-two properties that have already been designated, let's just get a consensus, so we don't keep going back and forth. There is no criteria in front of us that gives us, other than the fact that they've been designated subjectively in the past, does anybody have heartburn with that? Or we could hold off? I'm just given the options, this is not a lack of support or either which way, or we can hold off until we can make the determination that they fit the criteria we established? How would the council wanna go? Mayor Protem Stewart.
My personal opinion is, those people know way more about the history of Temecula than I could ever know. And so, I, I believe what they say and what they've been standing behind for the last forty-five years, based on the nineteen seventy-five or whatever, that those are historic, twenty-two historic properties. So, I have no heartburn at all saying those twenty-two, in my opinion, are for sure historic. So, I don't have any heartburn over any of those.
Thank you. Councilmember Edwards.
I don't have any problem approving this tonight, and, you know, I think we could defend that decision. We're gonna have to defend that decision as long as we come back with something that gives us some boundaries and guidelines in the future. And to clarify, Luke, something you said, the Mills Act only deals with the financial structure, correct? It does not determine, have anything to do with determining what's historic or approving what's historic.
That's correct.
Okay.
Okay, Dr. Ron.
Yeah, and, and look, I don't think anybody's questioning the validity of the twenty-two properties, but just going back to what I said earlier, can we just have the criteria and fill in that piece of the administrative record, right? And I'm the one to say, you know, yeah, let's go ahead and do this, with the assumption that, you know, part of making, you know, I don't know if we vote contingent on, you know, staff coming forward, you know, of these other, you know, fee structure and all these other analysis, just provide that, you know, quick list, so that, you know, so that we've got that piece of the administrative record filled in, and that if this item is ever taken up and future properties ever, you know, discussed, or somebody says, hey, you missed one, or whatever it is, we're able to at least have that, have that gap filled in for us.
I haven't added to that.
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I have been that too.
All right, go ahead.
And I think we are not sitting here saying that what the Women's Club did is right or wrong. We just want to have a record of it, yeah. And we're not gonna say, oh, that's not right, that can't be historic, because, and we're not gonna question that. I think we just need to know, if there is a set of guidelines that they, that they use, what were they, so that we can have just a record of that. And we're not about to say what isn't right or wrong, 'cause again, I know what, you know, I don't know much about art, but I know what I like.
Okay, so, here's the mayor's motion, all right? We will adopt the properties as designated, the twenty-two that were brought in, that were put on the screen there, into the Mills Act, okay? We also request a part of this motion, that you bring us the criteria for which they were designated historic, okay?
If they can.
We will use that criteria to tear off of, if you will, the criteria for the future, okay? At the same time, Luke, when you bring this back, you'll bring us back the fee schedule and the structure? Everybody with me so far? Anybody wanna add anything to that? Okay. Say that again, Matt?
And then the other, the other piece is consideration for Historical Society to act in an advisory capacity for the Mills Act program.
I'm good. Add that to the motion. And motion stopped for a second, just as a side note from yours truly. I mentioned it before, as you do your research, find a, at least, seems like there's a consensus, find another mechanism to codify historicity other than the Old Town Specific Plan. If that's your only go-to, then I will deal with it, but I think there's a better way. As we create this magnificent program, and that's our goal to do it, but I, I, I like what you brought forward, we're not bureaucrats, there's a step of faith in everything that we do, I think we can go on faith comfortably with the work that you guys have done. Anybody else wanna say anything to this? Anybody else? Okay, do we need to repeat the motion, or are we good, guys?
If we can get a second.
I'll say.
Let Mayor Protem.
I'll say.
Oh, sorry, I thought you were bringing the motion.
No.
No, I did the motion.
Okay.
All right, and that was Mayor Protem Stewart. Please cash your votes. I'm waiting for mine to come up, that's my fault. And, let's see, let's see, that passes five zero. What we're gonna give to you guys is something more robust than you even came in here wanting, okay? So, that's the goal, all right? Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
No applause, no nothing? Nothing? I know it was painful, but...
Yeah, all righty. Item eighteen, consider methodology of appointments to the city's boards and commissions, and provide direction at the request of Councilmembers Ron and Stewart. City Clerk, is this your staff report?
Yes, sir.
Go for it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. This item is before you tonight at the request of councilmembers Ron and Stewart, as they wished council to broadly discuss the options associated with how board and commission members are currently appointed, and how they could be appointed in the future. The city currently has three commissions and one board. The commissions are Community Services, Planning, and Public Traffic Safety, and the board is the Old Town Local Review Board. Each has five members, and the standard term is three years. When a vacancy occurs, appointment is made to fill the remainder of the unexpired term. Terms are staggered by even and odd years, with Planning Commission and Old Town Local Review Board expiring in June, and Community Services and Public Traffic Safety Commission terms expiring in October. With respect to the current recruitment and appointment process, board and commission members are currently appointed by the council upon the recommendation of the subcommittee, consisting of the mayor and the liaison to the specific board or commission. When the mayor is the liaison, the Mayor Protem serves on the subcommittee with the mayor. The recruitment efforts include a receive-and-file item on the agenda notifying the council and public of an upcoming vacancy, and various methods of advertisement announcing the vacancy and the application process. The application period is open for thirty days, and the full process from initial notification to the final appointment and seating typically takes about three months. That being said, cities throughout the state also use other methods to make similar appointments. You have a slide up on the screen that broadly references those other types of methodologies. Our other methods include recommendation by elected official and appointment by the council. With this alternative, each council member recommends an appointment to each board and commission with final approval by the full council. The election system type is irrelevant. With the second alternative, recommendation is by the district representative, appointment by council. With this alternative, each council member recommends a member from their district to each board or commission with final approval by the full council. This alternative is used primarily in cities that have district elections. Recommendation by the subcommittee of district representative and mayor is a third alternative, whereby each council member, together with the mayor, recommends a member from their district or the city broadly to each board and commission with final approval by the council. And then finally, there's also the recommendation by the subcommittee of two district representatives and appointment by the council, whereby two council members recommend a member from their respective districts and/or the city broadly to each board or commission with final approval by council. Of course, there are other alternatives that could be either what we currently do and/or a hybrid of these options. In closing, should the council wish to change the current process in any way, enhanced and targeted recruitment methods, along with a formalized interview or selection process, may also be considered. And that concludes staff's presentation. We're happy to turn it over to councilmembers Ron and Stewart for any additional comments as they have requested this item.
Gentlemen, would you like to add anything to the staff report? Okay, are there any questions of staff?
Oh, yes. Could we leave the, the list of the different choices on our screens?
Yes, we'd be happy to leave that screen up.
There you go.
So, we're questions? Questions of staff? Are there questions? Oh, okay, I thought you had a question there.
Well, I, I'll make one as I was talking.
Is it a question?
Yes, it is. So, Randy, our Madam City Clerk, so, is it true that other cities do it? These recommendations, these alternatives, are being used in other cities? It's not, it's not just something you've just made up. These are actually ones that are actually being implemented in other cities presently, correct?
Yes, actually, several years ago, Councilmember Ron had brought his interest in this particular topic up, and at the time, we had did a listserv survey across the state of California, the types of different methodologies the cities use for appointments, and these reflect those top four or five.
Got it.
Anything else?
Me.
Ms. Edwards.
So, Madam City Clerk, when you say recommends a member from the city broadly, does that mean the city at large?
Correct.
Not by district?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? I don't see any. Do we have any requests of speech?
We do not.
So, we'll move right into council discussion. Who'd like to kick it off?
Yeah, I mean, you know, so as we were contemplating districts, you know, several years ago, and going through this, through this process, you know, I had asked regarding the representation, because I feel like if we're going to districts, then it creates a different level of, I think, accountability, but also, you know, our ability to, you know, have, you know, that, that sort of representation within the district reflected beyond just the member that's, that's elected, and into the community for folks on, you know, all the, the variety of boards and commissions that we have. And, you know, bringing this forward, you know, today is just for us to discuss this as an option, to talk about, you know, you know, the ideas of, of representation within the district and at large as well, and come up with solutions to, you know, make sure that, you know, one other item that I think the city clerk brought up, which is, you know, sort of enhancing and creating, I think, a more robust recruitment process as well. And, and, you know, and I wanna say something, you know, to be abundantly clear as well, is that, you know, there aren't any existing board or commission members that, you know, cause me concern to wanna bring this forward. It's just, you know, as the city has transitioned through this process for its variety of reasons, I, I strongly believe that our boards and commissions need to eventually evolve through that process to, you know, take on a, a similar perspective. So, so that's the only reason this was brought forward, to have a discussion. I've got my opinions, my, my preference is kind of actually a hybrid between a couple of these, so I feel like we can go one better to increase, you know, both our, our options and, I think, our flexibility, but I'm happy to hear what my colleagues have to say.
Very good. Mayor Protem Stewart.
So, Matt and I had a discussion about this a couple years ago, actually, and it was also my feeling too, that, you know, since we were breaking up into districts, literally, that if there was a representation from each district on each commission, it would encompass the entire city. Now, granted, there aren't, there might not be any decent applicants from one particular district. That's why the, the option number three is what I like, because it does afford the, the pickers to go outside of their own district if they don't, if they don't have any good options inside their district. So, so, for me too, it was, it had nothing to do with who we have on our, on our commissions right now. It's just going forward, if we, if we wanna represent the city in all our districts, 'cause, 'cause frankly, you know, traffic, safety, may be a whole lot different in District Four than it is in District One. And, you know, and everybody comes in with preconceived ideas and, and thoughts, and it does change from where you live. So, that, that's where I was, I was coming from too. It's just that, there's different dynamics in Zach's district, you know, it goes into Old Town, you know, so there's, there's all these other different, and, and so, it would behoove Zach to be one of the pickers for that, you know, to have a voice on that committee or board, so.
Councilmember Swank.
Yeah, thank you very, very much, Mr. Mayor. So, when I saw this item come up on the agenda, I thought, wow, it just came off a commission. I might have a little bit to say on this one. So, you know, having served on a commission for the last six years, I feel like the process that we have in place, I genuinely felt created like good commissions, right? Having the mayor involved and then the liaison to that. Specific commission's important. I think the liaison to that commission knows those, knows that department well, and knows the commissioners as well, so I think that's important. Having been chosen in that setting, I felt like it gave me some autonomy. Like, I didn't feel like I was appointed by a certain individual, and that I could be myself, and I really feel like that made me thrive as a commissioner. It just gave me that sense of like, I'm just here to serve the residents, and I'm gonna do everything I can, and I don't necessarily have to think of, well, who appointed me, that sort of thing. I didn't, that didn't enter into my, my thoughts. I felt like if I was gonna do a good job, I would be reappointed, and then that was really how I went about my day-to-day as a commissioner. That independence was extremely important. That independence was extremely important. I don't want to put that burden on another commissioner. Like, let's say, you know, we have specific concerns in D5, and I handpicked someone for D5 and to let them, make them feel that they're beholden to D5, and I wouldn't want that, someone to not think about the whole city. Because if you remember, there was very little support for districts at the council level.
None.
And I don't really want to push that on to that commission level because I do feel the commissions that we have work extremely well together. A couple of our most recent appointments live in the same district, so we would, one of those would have been precluded from being a commissioner currently. So, and I think those themes would ring true through a lot of our commissions. So, those are just some of my concerns. I brought up some changes that I feel like, I do feel like we need a more formal interview process. I do feel that the way that the process is now, from an application through the process is, could be revamped. It could encompass a little bit more, whether it's more in-depth interviews or a little more follow-up, or maybe if the person's applying for the Planning Commission that have Planning Commission staff in those meetings or in those interviews because they're the day-to-day, and that commission, that Planning Commission is the day-to-day, that Community Service Commission is that day-to-day working group with the department. So, I think that's something that we could, we could look at. Let me see what else I have. And again, I think it's important that the relationships that the commissioners have with staff is important, so maybe even especially on a reappointment, that you have staff involved in those discussions to sort of take away, this is what's happening on the ground, this is what's happening day-to-day. As far as I know, I haven't been on any of that process, so I don't know that that happens. If it does happen, great, that was just something that I was jotting down. And I think one of the things that, and I've been vocal about this on the commission, is do your job, right? And there's not any commission over there that I want them to be listening at home and thinking, oh, my gosh, I'm not doing my job, but I don't think we should be hesitant to mix things up. If things are, if things need to move in a different direction, I think that's a good thing. The city continues to evolve, and that's okay. And if you've served as a commission, commissioner, and someone else comes along that's a better fit or has something else to offer, then maybe that's okay, to select someone else. So, there's just a few of my thoughts.
Well, I have a few thoughts.
Me too.
Oh, did you go yet?
No.
Oh, go ahead. Go for it, Ms. Edwards.
I didn't go. So, I was vehemently opposed to dividing the city into districts. I mean, almost violently so. I was ready, Peter will tell you, I was ready to go to court, do anything that it took, and as it turns out, the case was not winnable. So, cities all over the state and school districts and other jurisdictions have had to divide into districts. And the thing that's so unique about Temecula and wonderful about Temecula is we've never been a divided city. People don't care what color their neighbor is, we all love each other because we're Temeculans. People don't care what neighborhood you live in, you know, you're not better because you live in one neighborhood or the other. And I think that city council members took a lot of pride in knowing their city, and I know I did, and having lived here thirty years, I can honestly say I know almost every street in this city, and we know the issues, and serving as a commissioner, I also took great pride in being well-versed in my commission topics or my commission jurisdiction, which was traffic and safety, as it applied to the entire city. You know, it's okay, right now, we didn't have a choice, we're divided into districts, and for this council, it'll be fine. What happens when this council has turned over two or three more times? Why, I think we can plan on seeing a division, an argument from one council member to the other, well, why does Red Hawk get these road improvements? I live in Meadowview, and Meadowview deserves those road improvements. It really pits one area of the city against the others, and we're fine because we don't think that way, because we've never thought that way, and I never will think that way. I don't want that same thing to happen to our commissions. I want our commissioners to have a broad perspective covering the entire city under the jurisdiction of the commission on which they serve. And it's a great experience to see how differently people in Red Hawk view their parks than the people do on, you know, in Harveston. And it's not wrong or right in either case, but they take a sense of pride for different reasons, and traffic is different throughout the city. You know, I have only residential, residents in my district for the most part, and so traffic isn't as much of an issue there day-to-day as it would be in whoever has the districts that have the freeway interchanges in them, or Old Town, or the shopping districts. So, I expect our commissioners to serve as I did and loved it, and Mike did, and Zach did, and learn and stay on top of everything in this whole city. I want somebody to have that whole city perspective this point and going forward. And we can't protect this city from future councils that may make poor decisions, but I think we can lay the groundwork and protect the city where we can. At least they would have to come in and do a public vote to change it, but I don't want to divide this city further by having our commissioners serve necessarily by district. And actually, if they did, there may be a time when a council member and a commissioner would have to abstain from any discussion on that, a particular topic, depending on where they lived. If they lived in proximity to one another and there were road improvements or something else going on within five hundred feet of each of their homes, each of them would have to abstain from discussion on the commission and then at the council level, and so that's not a good thing, and there'd be no representation. So, I don't want to divide the city further, and any of these that allows the city to still, the commissioners to still serve at large is fine with me. And as far as the interviewing process, depending on who the liaison is, some of them are more formal. Some people actually sit down and interview, some people talk on the phone, some people just go by the application, so, but I don't think it hurts to, you know, have that more formal process, and I don't mean to keep my back to you, Matt, but, and I don't have a problem with, you know, the liaison continuing to work with the mayor, and I think that has worked well for us. You know, and I have actively asked people to apply, and there have been times when I've asked two or three different people to, you know, there's an opening on this commission, apply for it. So, we can still continue to do that regardless of what area they live in. Good people are good people, you know, regardless of what part of town they live in, so I will continue to ask people to apply, and I always tell them upfront, I give them the disclaimer, just because I'm asking you to apply doesn't mean you're going to get on the commission, but I think you'd be good at it. So, that's kind of my theory. I talked to the candidates, and I've been known to go out and ask people to apply. I don't want to divide the city any further. I like having the commissioners at large covering the whole city.
Thank you, Dr. Ron.
Well, just a couple of things. I got to say, I'm pretty disappointed because I've heard that this, what we're talking about here tonight is going to lead to poor decisions and division, and so you're basically saying that Stu and I brought something together that is going to divide the city and lead to poor decisions? Really? I mean, come on, you know, I mean, just hear me out here for a second. That, I have to say, is incredibly offensive and a bit short-sighted, right? And that's exactly what everybody's just said. The whole point of what, and I said, I've got an alternative that I'd like to propose. We're not trying to divide the city more, we're not trying to cause strife within the city, but I too have made recommendations and had people apply to commissions for nearly six years now, and not a single one of them have made it on a board or a commission because I wasn't liaison, nor was I the mayor at that time, and my recommendations of who I thought would best represent, and they weren't from within my district, by the way, never made it on a board or a commission because I wasn't that representative, right? And so, that perspective was completely lost, and, you know, as we go through that annual cycle of saying, who's going to be the liaison for what? My experience with this was, that wasn't a rotation, that was an individual who sat as that liaison for the Planning Commission or the Traffic Safety or whatever the entire time I've been here. So, I never had an option to bring forward a conversation, a meaningful conversation of how I think and view, you know, the candidates for the Planning Commission, because I came here and we just sit around and we presuppose that the recommendation made by the mayor and that liaison is, you know, who we appoint. Now, I'll couch that by also saying that those, most of the appointments over the past six years have been with existing members who have done an outstanding job, so it was easy to say, absolutely, right? But, you know, again, not serving as that liaison, not being in that position, you know, my opinion is basically nullified, right? There's at no point, these were examples of what other cities do. I think Temecula can certainly do better. I think we all need to come to, and the one common thread here, however, is that the entire council agree with the appointment of the individual, and there's just a recommendation made by a council member, right, and maybe a council member or mayor. Some cities have gone as far as to say, it has to be from that district. I don't think we should do that. I absolutely don't think we should, because I think it should be the best candidate that you as a council member sees as that potential for that representation in the city, and whether they come from Harveston or Red Hawk, I don't care. I want to find the best person and best potential representation, but I also want a voice in that process. And if that means that every time we have a discussion of new boards and commission members and I have a non-represented member and a mayor making a decision, I'm going to challenge that decision every time and say, no, I absolutely disagree, and I think these are the folks, because I've been putting up candidates for six years and not a single one of them has ever made it onto a board or commission, right? That's why I'm bringing this forward, because we want accountability, we want diversity, we want, you know, all of these things represented in the council, and we're hiding behind this, you know, potential threat of division and poor decisions, which neither Stu or I are here to create division within the city or, you know, or poor decisions. That was never the intent. The intent was, let's just have better representation and relationship. I don't want to influence Planning Commissioners or board members, that's not the point either, you know? They need to maintain their independence, and we can even create policies, you know, around all of that. Are we going to bind future councils by any of this stuff? Absolutely not. And a future council twenty, thirty, forty years from now could go in a complete opposite direction. Heck, districts may not even be here in forty, fifty years, who knows what's going to happen, right? But what I'm saying is, as a council member, if I basically participate zero in the process of appointment, then the voice of the people who have elected me by that district isn't being heard.
I have a question for you. Every recommendation for an appointment comes through the full council. Do you feel disenfranchised when that occurs?
Absolutely, hundred percent.
Let's go into that.
The people who apply to our boards and commissions are affected folks within our community, right? And they don't deserve to have us arguing over them and weighing their characteristics in public, right? They absolutely do not deserve that because on their own merits, everybody who makes it through that process and makes it through, I trust every single one of you on this council to make a solid decision, but I have the lack of representation because I wasn't part of that decision process whatsoever. So, I think it's disingenuous for us to bring forward a recommendation, go through an interview process, go through this whole, you know, thing with a couple of candidates who make it to, you know, a board or a commission, and then I sit here and question your decision-making and your ability to do that, or their credibility as a candidate, because I know that's probably, neither one of those are true. But in absence of that, my voice has simply not been heard through that process because all I'm handed is the final check saying, agree with this because we've done all the legwork for you, and I'm saying, you know, look, I have a very strong perspective on traffic and safety, and yet I haven't sat on that as liaison. I have a very strong perspective on planning, you know, and our other, you know, and community services, and yet I haven't had the opportunity in six years to serve as liaison for any of that, you know? And so, why, you know, why is it that, you know, and look, we all have our territories and the things that we hold, you know, dear, so why wouldn't we be allowed to, you know, be able to be part of a more robust and appointment process in the city?
There's absolutely no reason, okay? There's absolutely no reason for that. And so, I think, excuse my back, I think there are just very good solutions and things that we can put out there. So, I haven't given my comments yet, but I do want to work backwards from some of the things that you said.
I want to answer him a little bit, too.
Yeah, we'll get there, we're going to have a good discussion. Working backwards, you know, talking about somebody who's appointing for a position or challenging one of your colleagues is never comfortable, okay? But we got the big job, okay? It just is what it is. And I will tell you that somewhere along the line, and I don't remember what this was, I typically remember most of these things, but I don't remember when it was where we went to the subcommittee of mayor and the liaison. It probably happened sometime over the past seven, eight, nine years. I will tell you, when I was appointed to the Planning Commission back in the day, it was a free-for-all. There was no subcommittee recommendation, and I remember distinctly, you know, being laid bare as Jeff Stone made a case for me to be appointed, and no joke here, no joke whatsoever, and Jeff Comitero saying, well, you know, I like Mr. Nigar, but I really like this person better. And I'm sitting there on pins and needles, so is this other person, and it was not comfortable, but it was open, and everybody had a say in it. So, my first thought, you want to get rid of the subcommittee, I'm fine, that's okay, we can do that, or we can rotate the liaisons, okay? I mean, in other words, nobody keeps the liaison, I've been Planning Commissioner liaison for seventeen, eighteen years, maybe more, maybe my whole tenure.
The only issue with the rotation is that not every year is, you know, because the way we have it staggered, not every year do those opportunities come up equally, right? I mean, that's the only issue with it, right? And so, and then, you know, on a given year, if you're not serving as mayor and you're the other part of that, you know, subcommittee, if you're not in that period, you could miss a Planning Commission cycle like I have for six years.
Then, let's not even, let's tell you what, no liaison, no mayor selection. Now, and we can go, we can go to, I think we need to talk about a formal interview process, I think that was a good deal. So, we could just remove it, I'm fine with that, and give everybody, and now, listen, it's not comfortable talking about people in public, but it is what it is. You want to apply for a position, that's your first step into the public foray, you live in a fishbowl, okay? And if you're going to be a commissioner, you're going to be in the fishbowl, and it starts right here in the interview process. That's it. So, I think, right there, we have a good solution moving forward, and I'm totally okay with that. We can talk about a formal interview process. I did have some comments here. Now, I may not need to go into all my comments. Does that get it done for both of you guys?
I'm fine.
I think it does. I think it does, you know, and look, I know, Zach, I know neither you or Mary Ann meant to, you know, make the statement that we're divisive or, you know, encouraging poor decision-making, but that's what was said, right? And what was put up here by Randy, this was by the city clerk, this was, this was the example of what other cities do, right? Neither Stu or I came here saying, oh, yeah, number two, definitely, I mean, that's the winner, right? None of us came here doing that. It was just, here's what other cities do. We know as Temecula, we always do things differently, and we tend to always do things better, that's why we're Temecula, you know? So, I wanted to be able to have this conversation, and if it results in something, you know, other than that, I mean, you recall, you know, the first super public uncomfortable meeting, you know, I can remember is when we had to appoint a city council member, and that was kind of a rough process because everybody was on display, you know, and fortunately, we didn't go into the strengths or weaknesses and, you know, drag through folks through that, you know, very uncomfortable process. We need to figure out how not to do that to Planning Commissioners because there's some very respected community members with fantastic backgrounds, and I don't want to have them go through this process and then say, yeah, but you're not as good as, you know what I mean? I mean, it's, and I get what you're saying, Mike.
How do you avoid it that?
Absolutely, and it's a rigorous process, you know, I'm okay exploring whatever it is as long as I feel as though my voice is actually being heard, you know, and my perspective based on, you know, I know we all represent the city, but, you know, the unfortunate, you know, part of that now is we are elected by a district now, and so we have to take into consideration that we represent those folks as well, right? And we have, you know, directly for those people, I mean, that's the, that's the whole election process, those are the folks that voted for us, and we need to make sure that if, you know, Harveston has a very important issue with traffic safety, and we as a council never allow them to have a voice, you know, in that process, you know, we're doing a disservice to Harveston.
Let's keep, let's make sure we keep this defined, okay? The voice that you're talking about is the ability to make a selection for a commissioner at large in the city. It's your particular voice for an at-large person in the city, is that what I'm hearing?
And I think that's a fantastic step forward, that we collectively have that conversation.
But I want to further clarify- But it, but, and, but I want to further clarify. It's not necessarily protecting your district by that choice, but it's giving you as council member of that district a greater participation in the process.
Right, but you certainly want to hear, I mean, you know, we all come from a different part of the city now, right? I mean, and we all have a certain perspective. And if that perspective isn't brought forward to that discussion, and it becomes a perfunctory process, which for six years, in my opinion, it has been, where that recommendation's made forward, and it's not up to debate really, uh, because we don't want to do that to our colleagues or these folks, right? Then, then that voice, that perspective of that part of town never really gets brought up. And you know what? I'm okay, even if I make a, a, a passionate argument and say, that's the person that absolutely, and if the four of you don't agree, you know what? Every one of these solutions allows you that anyway. Because even if we pick number two, and I make the recommendation, you all can veto that and say, no, absolutely not. That is not the person, and we're not gonna take Matt's recommendation. We're gonna take this person instead. That, that option is still built in there.
Okay, so, I, I haven't really gotten into some of my points yet, cause I'm addressing what you folks have brought up. We implemented the subcommittee system because it made things, not necessarily for this issue alone, but it made things run more smoothly in the city. It meant that two councilmen, which by the way, I wish more cities would do, because it clears the way for bureaucracy. It meant, it meant that two council members, depending on the subcommittee, gets together and does all the heavy lifting, and gets rid of all the minutia. And so that the only real thing that comes here to the council dais, because there's a presumption that the subcommittee members did their work along with staff, is some of the more salient issues that come forward. Some of the more things that the, either the subcommittee couldn't decide on, or the subcommittee decided on them, but they tend to be a little bit more controversial. Heck, Mr. Stewart, you voted against some projects that came forward that had subcommittee recommendation. Nothing stopped you from doing that.
I have too.
And, 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 so, so that's where the subcommittee process was for, was to streamline things. Now, bring it back into this discussion. It's the same purpose. The same purpose was that the subcommittee would do the interviews. The subcommittee would vet the candidates and come up with who they felt were the two best. But that never precluded anybody from weighing in. You've weighed in again against the subcommittee, and so have you, and so have you. So there's no disenfranchisement.
Well, but it's different, because it's a, it's a personnel issue, right? We also don't bring personnel issues to council.
But it's always going to be a personnel.
Of course it is, but, but the way, I mean, it is a lot easier to talk about, you know, an, a, a, you know, a, a convenience store, you know, and weigh in on our op-, uh, opinion about, you know, something like that, than it is about, you know, the merits of an individual publicly.
Here's my point, though, and I don't disagree with you. I don't think that will ever change, no matter how we change this. If we go to, everybody has a say, and there is no subcommittee, we don't get rid of that discomfort. In fact, we might even increase it.
Yes.
Okay, so I, I want to make it clear, that doesn't go away. I want to say a few things, cause I think some of the things that I'm gonna say are, are, are important, and I've learned from other council members over the years. I used to hear Jeff Stone, back in the day, say, one of the best type of, of, uh, of accolades you can give a sitting commissioner is one of two things. Promote them to another commission if that's what they desire, or, or reappoint them for doing a good job, because it certainly is, is not for the money. And a lot of, and you brought this up, a lot of, a lot of what we've done over the past few years are a lot of reappointments. Because you look back over the years, doggone it, the commissions have done a great job. And so, short of a reason to, you know, who, who are, let's just take planning commission. I think we recently reappointed John Telleseio. Maybe even, let's, I, I think that was it, John Telleseio, I can bring up others. But, you know, I think Mr. Telleseio's in his fourth term.
And traffic before that.
And it was traffic before that. Okay, um, I have absolutely no problem with, let me tell you, let's get it out and let's talk about it. Was his performance good? Absolutely. Has he been on there a long time? Yes. Is it, is it an awkward situation to have somebody there that long when other people want to serve? Absolutely, it's awkward. It's a very difficult decision to make. And, and I'll tell you, um, I, I don't, be very transparent here, because I want this council to be transparent. When we did that, I called Mr. Telleseio, and I posed that question to him. And I said, John, you know, this is unprecedented. I need to know you're all in. Um, I need to know you're a hundred percent in, because there are other people that want to serve. We just can't rubber stamp you in. And he swarted me up and down, and he continues to do a good job. Now, I don't mean to point out, Mr. Telleseio. What I'm trying to do is, what do you do with somebody like that? Do you give them a gold watch and say, thank you for your service? Or do you keep appointing them?
It'd be a loss to lose, I think.
Well, and then there's that old notion of change. Well, we, and I tell you, I hate this when I hear it, well, we need fresh ideas. Now, you know, listen, I, I hate when I hear that, because everybody who's currently serving has fresh ideas, okay? It, 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 it's, it's just a, a funny way of looking things. I mean, uh, anyway, I'll go on. And I, and, and I definitely want to talk about these things. But, but it's uncomfortable no matter what. So I don't mind changing it, cause I don't want any proprietary, uh, 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 power in appointing somebody. I really don't care. I'll even give up my liaisonship. Doesn't matter to me whatsoever. Because I know, if I have a problem, I'll speak publicly. And I will, and I'll say that. I want to talk about this district thing. We all went to districts kicking and screaming. Now, we, we've worked great under the current system of not only at-large council members and, uh, choosing commissioners at large, for doggone near thirty years. And I could tell you, you know what? We're probably one of the most envied cities in the state of California. So I'm not that enthusiastic about changing it. Now, we're less than a year and a half, maybe a little bit more into districts, and, and we're talking about being proprietary. I'm a, uh, that scares me a little bit, to be honest with you. Um, when we all started out with the district thing, kicking and screaming, and saying we did not want it to split the city. Now, I'm not suggesting you want it to split the city.
No, is I.
But it's the natural thought to take that to the next level, when once, I didn't know, I didn't know where you were coming from. So my thought was, well, you want to choose, and I'm not saying you did this. The thought was, you want to choose a commissioner from your district. To me, that's, that's splitting it even more. And I'll give you an example. In my district, I got people who don't want Inez widened, okay? Do you understand, if I do what they want me to do, all right, it shuts down the whole city? I have to stand up to my own constituents and say, hey, it's to the city's benefit. They're a large voting block, I have to tell you. I will be at risk, but it is what it is. And I didn't like districts because of that. Because the others, rest of the city would have acknowledged the sacrifice. But I digress. Everyone in this city, and every one of our commissioners, knows this city, okay? It, 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 they're, every one of us have been all over the city. Now, there may be a little nuance that you can only recognize if it's happening out your back door or around the corner. I'll grant you that. But every one of us have been in every corner of the city. We're not that large. And I can, I can tell you, I've, in a, in a city our size, all over the state, districts tend, at least it's my opinion, and I think we came to that conclusion when we were forced to go to districts, that a city our size, districts, districts are detrimental, not advantageous. Maybe when we're up into two hundred thousand or two fifty, the need for districts. But then the need for council members with staff, and, and, and all of that also kick into place. So I'm, I'm, I'm very protective of moving in a direction, and I'm not suggesting you are. In fact, you've said the opposite, so let me be real clear. You kind of alluded to it, though, but, but you, you did not. I, I do not want to further go down the path of districts. Um, I, I, I'd like to even try to, try to pull away from that. Shoot, I have in my notes here, I wouldn't mind the council adopting a resolution the first of every year, uh, saying that though we are elected by districts, we serve at large. You know, just making that statement until, until a year came when one coun-, when you had three votes not to do it. You know, I like that idea, because our at-large concept works. It's worked for thirty years. If it was broken, then I'm all for fixing it. Now, I had a whole set of a couple of notes here that I don't even think I need to talk about, cause I think we're on the same page. Go ahead, give me a second, Dr. Ron.
But I have.
I got you. Uh, I know I'm a little long, and I, and I want to go with everybody here. In fact, let me rest for now. Let me go to Mary Ann, and then back to you, Dr. Ron, and then we'll go back to this side. Is that okay?
Yeah, Matt, and, and Stu, I wasn't alluding to the fact that you were trying to do something that would divide the city. I was just looking at these choices and saying, some of these choices clearly would perpetuate what I feel um, is going to happen to the city in the future, that because we're divided into districts. I think it's just natural that not we, because we still think of the city at large, at least I do. I think, when I vote for something, I think of how it's gonna impact every part of the city. You know, and, and, and especially when, where traffic is concerned. It's like a butterfly flapping its wings in Argentina affects the weather in Alaska at some point. Something happens on seventy-nine South, it's gonna impact, you know, all the other streets in town, so. And that's what you mean about Inez. It will change the whole traffic circulation. So I still think globally, as far as the city is concerned, and I want to have a representative that doesn't feel like they have to agree with what I believe or what I say. And I also want those traffic, the, the commissioners in general have a chance to work on their issues of jurisdiction. So they can visit any part of the city and just focus on that one thing. Whether it's traffic, you know, traffic and safety, whether it's parks, what, you know, whatever it is. And I think that's good. They can focus in more detail probably than the council members can focus all over the city at the same time. So I like that, and I also like the fact that a commissioner would not feel obligated to me. And I can tell you, I have asked people, I've suggested that people, um, apply, and I ended up not supporting them, because I vote for who I feel was the best candidate. Um, and I trust my, you know, my fellow council members, the, the committee members, to have chosen that candidate. And there's no reason, every, every one of us could have copies of those applications. And I'm fine if we get rid of the, you know, the mayor and the liaison thing, I'm fine. But at some point, you know, you have to suffer the pain at some point. And the, and the difficulty, the most uncomfortable part of that is, is that you hash it out in public. Um, but that's fine. I mean, they pay, you know, that's why we get the six hundred dollars a month to make those difficult decisions in a difficult environment, and Stu's laughing. But it's true. I mean, we are here to make those tou- tough decisions, and Temecula's worth it. So I just don't want to, um, I just, I, I want our city to be represented, um, you know, all over and not necessarily somebody that I pick from my district, so that they feel obligated, like, like Zach said.
Thank you, Dr. Ron.
Yeah, and I would just propose one other concept here, is that, you know, if, uh, let's, let's, you know, pretend we weren't on the council for a moment, and you're just living in your neighborhood. And then all of a sudden, you wake up one day and you see that, you know, every single, you know, planning commissioner lives in Paloma del Sol, right? You know, a, a, as, you know, as a resident, I would look to the council and say, hey, Paloma del Sol does not hold the patent on planning commissioners, right? There are, you know, Temecula is full of wonderfully qualified, talented people, you know? So, you know, maybe this is just a statistical anomaly, or, you know, maybe whatever. But hey, can you guys look a little bit more broadly perhaps, and get a slightly different perspective? Because, you know, it's not always, you know, living on the other side of the tracks, you've got a different perspective. And so, you know, so the only other thing I would say is, while I, I, I agree that I don't want to see us, you know, divide the city and, and do those things, I also think we need to be aware of, you know, the diversity of what we're trying to accomplish here in the city, and make sure that that's part of our thought process. And if we see these, you know, patterns emerge, where we start saying, gosh, I mean, you know, yeah, these are all extremely well-qualified people, but, you know, they're just never gonna have that perspective, and maybe we need that now. If I'm bringing that up at a future council meeting, and I, and I'll be honest, that, you know, I'm, I'm willing to, this is an experiment, right? The district thing was an experiment. We're, we're all going through this together. You know, and somebody who does, you know, research, you know, experiments could sometimes go off the rails, and they get really uncomfortable and, and sometimes fail completely. We don't want that to happen. So I'm willing to go down this path with all of you to try a different way of experimenting of how we do this. And maybe it's rolling back in time the way we used to do things. But, you know, but I also want to make sure that, you know, six years from now, if I've advocated on behalf of somebody who I say they need to be on traffic safety because of these reasons, and every year I bring that forward, and I get ignored by the rest of my colleagues, and, you know, and I'm, my voice is still not being heard, then I'm gonna bring this resolution back, you know, in a different form, because I feel like, you know, still, my perspective isn't, you know, isn't being, you know, uh, uh, addressed. Um, you know, and, 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 you know, hey, that's the whole, that's the whole game, is that, you know, you have to have your colleague's support to do anything on any project or anything. I get that. But, you know, I mean, look, this council gets along. We all understand each other, and we all, you know, work amicably to- together. Future councils, you know, in other cities, you don't see that, you know, sort of behavior in a lot of other cities. And so, you know, you, you, you also don't want to be in a position where you're marginalizing a colleague, you know, and their perspective either, right? And so I just, I just want us to be aware of that process. And, and, and if we go through this, you know, experiment together, you know, and at some point, and Stu and I, we obviously feel very passionately about this and have a very certain perspective. And if, you know, Stu, you know, two years from now, or, you know, whatever it is, and we feel like, man, you know, we tried it, and, you know, it's not quite doing what we think it's doing, you know? Then we bring back, uh, you know, a different conversation. But, you know, I really would like to see us, you know, change that process at a minimum, because again, I just don't feel like, you know, my voice has been heard on, on this item. And I felt like this was a great way to sort of bring this item forward. Um, you know, I, I know, uh, Stu and I had spoken about this, and I think, uh, you know, it's time for us to, uh, to, to change the way we do business in Temecula.
A couple of thoughts. Anytime in the future, somebody wants to put something on a council agenda and discuss it like we are now, you have that opportunity to do, so nobody's disenfranchised. If you feel two years from now, the system's not working for you, or whatever, we'll have this discussion again, if you so desire, or if somebody else desires. I'll get to you in a second. As it relates to, um, you know, five commissioners in Paloma del Sol, it's a little hypothetical, okay? And really, at the end of the day, I want the best people we can get on the commission. And if they all live in Paloma del Sol, then that's, then we got the best. I ju-, I don't think that the city is, is at a loss if that occurs. Now, I'm using your own hypothetical, need, that's never going to occur. Uh, maybe more broadly, five or four on the south side, and ones on the north side, or something like that. But, but I think the whole concept is, when you start, when, when, when you, 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 and I wonder if you're starting the slippery slope. That's, that's the concern. When we went to districts, we were concerned about the slippery slope. And, and when we start to be concerned about where a commissioner lives, then we're enhancing that slippery slope.
Well, let me phrase it a different way. You know, if, if all five of our planning commissioners live in homes that have a value over two and a half million dollars, do they represent the city of Temecula?
Yes.
I don't know.
Yes.
I'm not sure they do. I'm, I'm absolutely not sure that they do.
Why?
Because, you know, because now we have created a class of decision-makers in our city. You know, and I think it's up to me, eh, this is just my political perspective here, but I think it's up to me as a representative to be able to say, you know, look, um, you know, we have a certain perspective of what we'd like to see. I would really love to see somebody on the planning commission, you know, that doesn't drive a Rolls Royce. You know, I mean, you know, it's, honest to God, I think we have a responsibility to our residents, you know? And, and you always hear about inclusion and diversity, and making sure that, you know, our decision-makers in any elected or appointed body represents our city. And if we're not meeting that, and all we're saying is, well, we want the most, you know, qualified person, that's not necessarily how I define qualified, right? So, you know.
So their income is their qualification, with their, the value of their home?
I'm, I'm just saying.
How discriminatory is that?
It's not discriminatory unless that's part of the decision-making. I don't know that that's part of the decision-making.
It isn't today.
But I'm just saying, Mike.
But it isn't today.
That if we, if we create a class of, it's, it's coming from the fact that you have councils in cities all across the United States, who have classes of decision-makers, right? And the whole point of what we did, and the whole point of, you know, districts in the first place, whether or not we agreed with, you know, some of the philosophies and the litigation behind all of this, the whole point was, you know, and I think we can all agree with that, is the inclusion, the diversity, the idea that we have, you know, a, a, a real representation, you know, of how the city is supposed to run, and a variety of perspectives, not five people with the exact same perspective, right? And, and that's what I, that's what I want to ensure that we avoid.
I want to chime in here.
Uh, eh, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so, what, what has bugged me about the, the appointing of commissioners, and I've been involved in it. So I, you know, is the fact that we give this, the full council one choice to vote. I mean, i- it's not like there's an option. There's like, okay, there's option A, option B. I mean, it's not like there's an option. There's like, okay, there's option A, option B. We come, we bring back option A only, and we as non-voting council people trust you guys. And we don't want to make you guys look like your decision process is flawed somehow. So we, we agree with you, not necessarily because we weren't necessarily part of the process. And that's, that's the thing, if I were to change anything, forget the district thing. As far as I'm concerned, the district thing is a non-issue. Let's just say you had two choices, or three choices, to vote for that night. And like you said, let's, let's have a little discussion on, on who, who would be the better choice based on, you know, their applications or even let them give a little bit of a testimony on what they think the city should look like, or whatever they're commissioning for.
With all due respect, Mayor Protem,
Yeah.
You have that option now. You have that option now. Why you think you didn't have it, or why you haven't exercised it, maybe you just didn't know you had it. But when a subcommittee makes a determination, or a recommendation, I should say, you don't have to abide by it, and you know that.
Right.
You've gone against subcommittee recommendations, so I'm trying to get my arms around.
I, because, because I think Stu had the same perspective that I had, which is, it was a culture within the city, you know. I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, that's really, that's, that's the culture that I was, that I always brought into.
And be the iconic class, right there in the open, be the iconic class.
But that's what we're doing right now.
Well, I guess what I'm saying.
So, you know, so don't, so don't, you know, I mean, so, so, you know, just because we're bringing it forward now, and we're not doing it while there's three candidates there, you know, arguing over their qualifications, I think it's way more appropriate to do it now and say, can we create a structure that, you know, protects the integrity of this process, you know, and the candidates themselves, and allows us not to say, you know, hey, you made the wrong decision. I think the way we did it, when we were, when we went through that process of, you know, the city council member, we all laid out and we said, hey, you know, these folks, and we all had kind of our top, you know, folks. And we, we all said, you know, these are the folks that we think, you know, really rose to the surface and showed, you know, a certain level of, of, you know.
You did that openly.
We did it openly, and exactly, but that's my point, is that the culture here over the last several years was not that. And, and, and you may not agree, but you've been here for, you know, years, and that's how the system had worked. And so what I'm saying is, you know, rather than do that at our next meeting where a subcommittee and the mayor has made a decision about an individual, and then we start, you know, a debate here, I would rather do it now and say, can we change that process here today to, you know, create something that at least we feel is, is, you know, more balanced.
Listen, I'm really enjoying this conversation, and I truly am, and I'm glad we're having.
Move to 10:30.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, but this is no different than Dorothy always having the ability to go back to Kansas. You've always had this. You were never disenfranchised.
Maybe they didn't know it, though.
I, I'm not saying that we were disenfranchised. I'm just saying there was a culture here, and I think that's where Stu and I were speaking. And we said, you know, look, we would like to be able to change that, but I don't want to do it when a recommendation has been made on an individual that we all respect and trust, and I choose that opportunity to have this conversation at a council meeting. It's not fair. And so I would much rather bring that forward tonight and do it here than, than, you know, than otherwise. And I think that's why we brought this out.
Okay, but, and I see you, and I, and I'll go back here. But I'm trying to get my arms around this, no matter, even if we decide to forget the subcommittee and all that other stuff, the process is still going to play out with five council members having an opinion, talking about somebody who wants to be appointed. And it doesn't go away.
And, and yet we missed the entire interview process.
Well, you could.
No, you didn't.
No, we did. We, we, we missed the entire interview process because the subcommittee structure brought that member forward to that liaison and that person. Didn't bring it forward to me.
Okay.
You know.
And you may have a point there. You may have a, you may have a good point.
That's what I'm saying the disconnect is.
Yeah.
I had no relationship to any of these people until I saw them in the audience that night.
That's a good point.
But you, but, but, and that's what I'm going to suggest. I mean, I want everyone that's sitting here to know that you have every option and opportunity to get every single application and speak to every single applicant, just as, if we stay with the liaison and the mayor, which I really don't care. You have that opportunity, and don't feel like you don't. So then if they come forward, if we keep it with a recommendation, you can say, well, you know, I read the applications and I really liked so-and-so, and then we're off to the races, and I'm totally fine with that. And let me just add this for anybody who still might be hanging on, on television or in the audience. You may think this is an interesting discussion we have, but we are not allowed to talk about any of this stuff, except sitting at this dais. So if we know someone has applied for a commission or anything else, we cannot, I cannot talk to Matt and say, Matt, who do you like? And then I cannot go to Mike and say, Mike, who do you like? We cannot talk to each other about that, so.
The way the process was set up is that two of you did, and two of you made a recommendation and brought it forward.
Two can talk.
And the three of us are going to say, okay, we trust the work that you've done with it. I've looked at the applications, they're a qualified person, I'm not going to disagree with that. But my point is, is that, you know, I, you know, I, there was no process for me to, as, let's say, you know, Mike, you and Mary Ann were sitting on planning commission making that recommendation forward. You know, Stu and I didn't create our own separate subcommittee to interview, you know what I mean? It's just an un, it's an unbalanced process.
But you could have.
We could have, but we, but that was not the culture and the process in the city. And I was not, you know, I mean, I was aware that we could upset the apple cart to do just that. But, you know, I trusted the process, and frankly, after, you know, these many years, I don't think the process represents my perspective adequately. And that's why I'm bringing it forward now, again, rather than doing it while there's a candidate sitting there waiting to get appointed that you've recommended, that's just simply unfair to that person.
Fair enough. Hold on, hold on. Councilmember Swank.
Yeah, thank you. So I just want to sort of clarify and go back, and I mean no disrespect in my comments. It, this is just a passionate, I'm just as passionate about this as you are about it. Some of my notes, as I was reading this and going through the staff report, sort of over and over, is like, well, where do we land, right? Like, where do, what, what ultimately do we need? And everyone's voice needs to be heard. I mean, I think you've said that. I think that's truly important, right? That is an important aspect of it. I want to say, if only, as long as I've been attending the meetings, I want to say there was only one time where a commissioner was not affirmed or confirmed at a, at a public meeting. So typically that, that subcommittee recommendation comes forward and it gets confirmed, so.
Was it you, like? Was it you?
It was not. This was more recent. It was, I won't go into it, I guess. So my, some of my notes were, like, if it's a subcommittee, if it's a mayor and a liaison, I want to know why. And unfortunately, we can't talk about this in closed session. We can't, you know, just sit in the back room and talk about it. We have to talk about it here. So that's sort of the ugly part of it. But, but one of the things that I noted was, if you are going to put someone forward, I want to know why. I want to know, I want to hear, like, these are the reasons why this person's the best for the job. And I haven't had a chance to vote on any commissioners yet, but I sure hope I get that opportunity. And if I get an opportunity to sit on some form of a subcommittee, I'll look forward to that. I do trust each and every one of you, much like any subcommittee process with what you bring forward. I think that's just part of it. The one thing that I really like what you said, Dr. Ron, was about diversity, because I do think that our commissions could be more diverse, right? Like, maybe there's some housing issues that someone could lend perspective to that doesn't live, doesn't own a home, let's say. Maybe they're renting, maybe they're in affordable housing, maybe that's something. Maybe on the Public Traffic Safety Commission, does anyone ride a bicycle? Does anyone walk?
You do.
You know, not on that commission. So those are things that concern me when we talk about these broader issues, and when we have community services. Well, we have folks that are involved in the community, that are special needs families, that are just TVOSD to the core and just thoroughly immersed in our community. That's good. It's a nice, nice cross-section. So, I mean, I think there's some work to do here. I just, you know, my comments towards, you know, sort of, you know, handpicking someone, I, I don't want that responsibility personally. I'm not saying that that's what you wanted, but I just don't want that responsibility to say, well, this is, this is my choice.
If I, if I could, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I think what I'm hearing is, you know, nobody wants to be disenfranchised. And certainly, we don't want anyone to feel like they haven't been heard all these years. So if you want to do away with the liaison and mayor thing, that's fine. Everybody can review the applications and, you know, you can bring your, work with staff and bring one person forward, or you don't have to bring anybody forward. You can sit here and listen to the discussion and see how it goes. I can tell you, when I look at those applications, I haven't historically thought about the value of somebody's home or, you know, what their income might be. I do think about how long they have lived here, how long they've lived in Temecula, and I look at their community involvement and whether or not they've, you know, been to any city council meetings, or whether they've done some similar things in other cities. But mostly I look for the tone of their writing and the fact that they want to volunteer, they have a history of volunteerism, and that they're willing to work, because we want our commissioners to work, and I think they do. So, I mean, that's how my decisions are made, so I don't care if there's not a recommendation. I don't, I don't want you to feel disenfranchised.
Mayor Protem, Stuart.
I just brain farted.
That's okay.
You said that word!
I did. I just brain farted.
You said it again!
Oh, yeah. Okay, so, um. I'm losing it here. When Mary Ann was talking, I had a great idea. It was about, like, say, if we did not do a, a subcommittee. What I've found from being on a subcommittee is quite often, the minute you talk with your subcommittee person, you're thinking of the same person.
Very often, yes.
Very often. So what if we all got the applications? We all put forward to, you know, city manager, our recommendations for that particular seat. And I'll bet you it narrows down to like two people or less.
It'd probably violate the Brown Act.
Oh, would it?
Well, he can't, he cannot then, I mean, he can't eliminate.
He can't communicate to us, but he could bring the candidates here on the night we're to appoint, and then.
I don't, I don't know about that, no.
You'd have to do it in an open session, but your point is, is that we're probably.
But, but getting closer.
Wait a second, Matt, you're probably more, hold on, hold on. You're probably, we're probably more in sync than not.
Yes.
Yeah.
Exactly. But, but, you know, I see Peter's blood pressure raising. There's, let's, let's fix that real quick here. Because, because I think the other, the other piece is really, you know, I mean, you know, everybody who puts in an application is invited to come to City Hall to, you know, go through an additional, you know, interview process, more or less, right? We're also, I would understand as a council member, allowed to say, you know, I look, I like candidate, you know, M, and can you set up an interview, you know, with that candidate? Is that, is that still acceptable, Peter?
Sure.
Okay.
Individual council members can interview anybody that's on the list.
Okay.
What you can't do is say, narrow that list down, even through the city manager.
Without a public process. And so, so at that meeting, you've got 10 people on the application, they all show up. Or maybe somebody's not really that interested, they threw an application, they're not here, whatever.
Yeah.
But I've met, I've done my due diligence, and I say at the meeting, I would like, you know, candidate D to come forward and answer a few questions, you know. And make that public process go, run through that, you know, the way we normally would, and treat it like a, you know, quasi-interview like we did with the other place. And say, and maybe we've all, you know, landed on candidate D, you know, as one of our top choices. But then we have that public discourse, you know, and we, and we're able to narrow it down there, but we've done our due diligence on our own in the background.
But candidate D can't be telling the other council members that they've spoken to other council members, right?
Hold on, let's, let's, let me sit up here. Okay, so we can, we can kind of move on to where we're going with this. So let's presume we're, we get rid of the subcommittee process. By the way, something was, was lost in all of this, in that any council member at any time could have gotten the applications and reviewed them and talked to somebody. Where that got lost, who knows? I don't think that there was ever a policy decision at some point that said, do you remember, Aaron? Where we said that only the subcommittee is going to do this? It doesn't matter if you remember or not.
I don't recall, but I do know the way the current process works. I'm fairly certain all the applications are provided to the full council as the subcommittee's recommendation's coming forward. So under the current process, all five of you are seeing, should see, I believe, all the applications on everyone that did apply, and so you could review those, and it's public. And yet there's still a subcommittee recommendation attached to that staff report.
So hold that thought for a second. Again, I understand exactly what you said, Matt, about the culture. I got that. But at all times, the ability for you to take that application and call any individual and talk to them personally was always there.
Except that I didn't get that staff report and those applications until it was provided, right? And all the interviews had been done, and my timeline for being able to interview those folks was truncated to, you know, like, say, you know, hey, you know, hey, can we meet for coffee Sunday morning before the Tuesday meeting, you know?
Completely. I completely understand. You're, you're 100% correct. So let's move, we're communicating very well. And by the way, good councils that learn to work together work like this, okay? This, this is not to be avoided, this is to be embraced, okay? So I, I by no means think this is being unhealthy. So let's move to the next aspect of this. Presuming we go with eliminating the subcommittee, okay, and, and subcommittee recommendations, let's move to the formal interview process, and let's talk about how we envision that. Do we envision every applicant being here and being interviewed publicly like we did for council? I, I don't either. Do we, I'm going to make a recommendation that, that, that interviews be set up on a particular day, okay? That works for everybody, and if you want to interview that person, you be part of that interview stream. Give you an example, okay? Or you could choose to meet with them outside of that. That's always available as well. But, or maybe that's satisfactory to you. You get the applications, we all get them at the same time. Meet with, talk with whoever you want. Or if you want a formal process, let's, again, take planning commission. Randy, we'll check with when we can all be here for planning commission interviews. There's 10 people. They each get 15 minutes. Boom, the discount, so remember this one, this one, this one, all across the line. And if you don't want to be part of it, you're just not in it. Maybe there's somebody you like on there already, maybe you've reviewed it already, maybe you only want to interview three, but not all 10. I mean.
It's like speed dating. But, but, but I think, I really like what Zach said earlier, which was, you know, I would also like that, you know, those staff members that interact the most. You know, let's say we're contemplating reappointment, or even not. Let's say we have a whole new slew of applicants. I want to be able to talk to Luke and, you know, and, and, you know, others and say, you know, what, what do you think about these folks? And you've interacted with this person for their last term, you know, I want to be able to have those conversations.
Why do you think you would not be able to?
No, I'm not saying I wouldn't be, but I would just like that. I think that was an excellent idea, Zach. I want that built into this process to be able to do that, right? Because, because again, here at this, yeah, Peter, am I violating the Brown?
Does that put staff in a really awkward position, though?
Yeah, that's, 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 that's got a lot of potential problems with the Brown Act, because you've got everybody in one area at one time, you're all talking about the same thing.
Yeah.
You're just going from one to the other, so it could conceivably be, someone could misconstrue it as a serial meeting.
I just suggest that we look at the applications and call people on our own.
Hold on, let's, let's keep, keep order. Mary Ann, go ahead.
Yeah, I, what I've always done is just look at the applications. I pick out, and there's always standouts, and I pick out the ones that I like. And then those are the ones that I call, or I'll, you know, have, meet him, meet him for coffee or whatever. And that's a lot easier. It doesn't involve staff, because I know that could be really uncomfortable for staff to have to, you know, say something, even though it's a factual thing, and I don't really want to put them in that situation. I think when we do that, or if we do it that way, the only thing is we need to tell our candidates, explain the Brown Act to them and say, now, I've spoken to you, but if you speak to other council members, you should not comment on anything that we talked about. How would we do that, Peter?
It's difficult. It is, because, you know, a candidate's going to be seeing some trends with the first two or three council members they talk to. They may expand on that, oh, you know, by the way, I want you to know that this is what I think about this issue or that issue. So you're going to have a consistency of, of comments between all five council members.
But is it?
Particularly when it goes on, on, you know, one day and it's organized, to make sure that everybody gets the opportunity to speak.
But if we don't know that, if I don't know what this person said to Mike, or what that person said to.
In, in theory, perhaps, yes, but that's going to be tough for all of us to deal with if somebody complains that there was a serial violation of the Brown Act.
But I'm suggesting that we, everybody look at the applications and just make your appointments or call the person on your own. But then if we do that, how do we keep that candidate from, you know, alluding to something that I said and telling?
If, if a council member wants to interview a candidate, when that's set up, the staff can send, send the confirming email and say, by the way, under the Brown Act, you can't talk about what you've talked about with other council members. "By the way, under the Brown Act, you can't talk about what you've talked about with other council members."
Similar to what we do with developers.
Hold on, hold on. Councilmember Swain.
Yeah, I just want to go back to that point about talking with staff and having them involved. I think that's an important component of it. You know, it might be a tough decision, it might be a difficult choice, but it's something that I want to hear before we appoint, rather than maybe down the road. From my experience, I think that working well with staff and working with staff in general, you know, you never attended a meeting because you're not going to come to my meeting, so you haven't, you don't see the interaction, but Director Hawkins really did, and he knows. And then, if I go to an event, you know, we might talk, but staff sees the interactions and knows what we're doing, knows we're at events, or knows, you know, what we're putting into the city. So I think that staff component is important. And it might be a tough choice or a tough conversation, but I think it's worth having.
Well, I think we could do that as long as what staff gives us is not subjective. They could give us like an attendance report or an attendance at an event, but, but to do much more than that, it's going to be, I think it puts them in an awkward situation about making a judgment.
Did you want to say something? Okay, and go ahead, Dr. Ron.
Yeah, I, I mean, you know, I'm looking at our city clerk here and, and Peter and Greg and Aaron as sort of the godfathers for us. And I, you know, I feel, I don't want to shoot from the hip here tonight and come up with a policy. Yeah, right, or four. And, 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 and I really think, you know, look, I'd rather kick it back to you and say, can you make a recommendation on a process that allows us, if we have, if we have an interest in vetting a candidate, you know, come up with something that's defensible, that doesn't violate the Brown Act or places it, right? Because we're not going to answer this question here tonight, and if we do, we might not get it right. So I'd rather let us step back for a moment and say, you, you get the intent of what we're trying to do. You know, the first intent was, let's bring this conversation forward, we've succeeded in that. You know, bring some recommendations of what other cities do, we don't like that. So now, you know, create something, you know, that, that protects us from a Brown Act violation, gives us the flexibility to, you know, interview folks or dig a little bit deeper, and then a public forum that allows us to bring forward those folks that we feel best represent, you know, what we think the ideal candidate is and, and kind of, you know, just sort of create a broad framework around that that avoids some of the issues that we're worried about here.
Hold that thought, because that may be the way to go. I, I did want to weigh in on a couple of things. I like staff's opinion, but I don't want to give that type of, power would be too strong of a word, but I don't want to give that type of power to staff. I don't have a concern with our current staff, but I've seen other cities where staff has that sort of power, and it does not look good. It just does not look good, and it, it means that staff is stacking a panel the way staff wants to.
No, 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 that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying just...
I know, I didn't say you are.
No, no, what I'm saying is, just the, the, the structure of what we're trying to accomplish here is... No, and I, I know that, but I'm just saying, I'm not saying we need to create a... We've asked staff to come forward with recommendations and a demonstration of what other cities do. We don't like that. So can we kick this back to staff and say, okay, you've heard what we've said collectively here tonight? I think they have a good sense of where we are. Can you just bring this back to us with a, with a modified set of recommendations that would fit the legal standard of what we need to be accomplishing?
Yes, and what I just said was not alluding to that.
Yeah, yeah, no, I got it, yeah.
It's, I, I mean, I'll, I'll give you a good example. Community Services Commission, I may, I may go, let's say somebody's up for reappointment. I may go to Director Hawkins and say, hey, does he come to the meetings? Does, you know, what's his tenor like, what's his tone like? And, you know, I'll get it, I'll, I'll get the director's opinion. But I will tell you, there are times when I want a commissioner, okay, to hold staff accountable, to challenge staff, to say, you know what, I don't agree with staff, I disagree. And so, I don't want to put staff in a position where they're, you know, where they're, where they're... And I'm not alluding to our staff, where they're stacking it. And I've seen where that's occurred, and it, and it becomes very ugly. It just becomes a very dysfunctional system, yeah. But, the, the other thing I want to mention, and, and it just bears, I, I cannot control how anybody votes and what your feelings are about appointing somebody. I'm just going to recommend, I, and you alluded to something, Mary Ann. When I look at these applications, I look at residency.
Yep.
And I look at experience.
Yep.
And the experience doesn't necessarily have to be educational.
Right.
You can be one heck of a mom, and I, and I may put you up there. The experience is subjective. What I don't want to do is go down the path of socioeconomics, but if you guys do, I can't tell you not to, you know what I mean? If, you know, if, if, whatever it is, I, I don't want to really want to get into it. If you have some idea that, you know, I don't want any more rich people on the, you know, on a board or a commission.
Well, just let me, let me clarify. I just use that as an example, because, you know, I'm not trying to demean anybody. I'm just saying that if I, you know, we have a list of criteria that we think represents our community.
Right.
And if I don't think that certain, you know, and, and I think maybe, you know, Stu, you said it, you know, earlier, Zach was, you know, maybe we want, you know, folks who represent a different type of housing element in the city to be on Planning Commission. You know, maybe we want that, maybe we want that perspective. Maybe we want somebody who's, you know, dedicated to riding bicycles everywhere on Traffic Safety Commission, right? And that's their mode of transportation, right? I mean, all I'm saying is if, if we end up with five, you know, commissioners on traffic and safety who all they do is ride bicycles, now I've got a different type of concern, right? So, these are, these are just, you know, these are just hypotheticals. But I'm just saying that, you know, that those anomalies could occur. And my metric for what I'm looking for in a member, if I don't feel like it adequately represents a variety of perspectives and the diversity that we need to have in the city, then I'm going to speak up and say, hey, we've, we've got a statistical anomaly here that I don't think, you know, fits with what we're trying to accomplish for representation.
And you can absolutely do that.
Right? So, you know, socio-economic, whatever it is, we're all going to have a variety of, you know, considerations that we have in front of us, you know? And I'm not saying economics is the one, I'm just saying there are anomalies that pop up, and yeah, I don't want four or five, you know, solely dedicated bike riders or, you know, folks riding skateboards for our Traffic and Safety Commission only. I think we've made a mistake at that point, right?
Nice comparing you with skateboarders.
Yeah, just saying.
Okay, good example.
All right.
Yeah, 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 better example, okay? I like that. So, let's, let's sort of frame this. And I like your idea of sending it back to staff and having them come back with it. And I hope, I, I think there's a consensus for that. But let's frame what we want them to come back with. Rather than tell them to eliminate the subcommittee system, do we want to leave that up to them? Or are we telling them we don't want it?
I'm good either way. I mean, we can try without it, we've been doing it for so long.
I would like to try it without it. I would like to see us where we have more input altogether, rather than just two, so...
Zach?
I'd like, yeah, I mean, I'd like to see what that looks like, before I full-on commit, but I'm willing to at least give it a shot, give it a look.
Okay, so we do know that, actually, nothing's changed, but that plays out in public. Everybody knows that, okay? And, and so I'm going to also throw in a few other things that, in your, and tell me if you guys agree with this. We're going to have to, I think, maybe be more proactive in disclosing that to our applicants. Look, you're applying for a public position, okay? It's very possible you may be interviewed publicly or asked questions in public. It just, it, it's how the system's going to work. It's rough, and, but it is what it is.
But being on a commission is not always easy either, and they're going to get grilled by the public and...
Your foray into the public fishbowl.
Right.
Okay. So, Mr. Adams, are you getting this?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then I'm thinking that there's, again, consensus from my colleagues, that there needs to be some sort of interview process that, that is acceptable to everybody, whether or not they participate in it. Is that a fair statement?
Definitely.
Okay.
Well, I think, yes, there has to be the availability or the possibility that everybody can interview.
Right.
I don't think it, I don't, for me, I don't think it necessarily has to be facilitated by staff.
Well, let them, let, that could very well be a recommendation.
But yes.
Yeah, if, 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 I think at the end of the day, i- if staff had a series of interviews set up and you didn't want to participate, but you wanted to call one or two on your own, I think that would be available, so...
Yep.
Let me, let me, just getting the thoughts together here. I think that's it, am I missing anything?
I guess everything.
Anybody else? I, I'm going to ask you guys something. Do you mind bringing back a resolution affirming that while we're elected by districts, we represent the city at large as a philosophical resolution?
I think that's a great idea.
And, and my thought on that is that a council could adopt it, or not, each year, January of that year.
I'd like to see it on the city's birthday or thereabouts, wouldn't that be fun?
Happy birthday!
Right? I mean, as we do that, and, you know, every year, sort of acknowledge that new anniversary, see if we can bring it back around that date.
Yeah.
And, and, no, I agree 100%, I think it's a great thing to affirm. And, and you know what, for those of us on the council, or those of us who, you know, you know, get off the council at some point and, and, you know, the residents in the city, I think it'll be telling. If that, if that ever shifts in the future, then we know there's been a, a culture change within, within Temecula. And I think it's important to, 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 to recognize that.
You know, Dr. Ron, thank you, because we're laying the foundation, you know, we're here 30 years now, and we're letting, listen, people laid the foundation for us 30 years ago, and we're doing the same thing now for those 30 years ahead. And so, of course, people can change it, but I'd like to, today, here and now, this was our thought. Can you bring that back for the, the most appropriate meeting this year?
Um, yeah, of course, and, and I appreciate the recommendation to do that. In fact, we probably have a draft in my office somewhere that we've entitled "One City, One Voice", and we've been waiting for the right opportunity to, to bring that forward.
You might have one, you might just have one.
So, Kevin Hawkins, dust that baby off, all right? So, but just, just for me, is it January or is it, is it, is it in December? Or what would the council's pleasure be to see that?
I think Dr. Ron hit it, it's our birthday, our birthday's officially, what, December 1st?
1.
Yep.
So, the most appropriate meeting around that date.
So, the last meeting, November, prior to the 30-year anniversary.
I think that's appropriate.
We'll bring it then.
Yeah.
And we need to have cake.
Yeah, that's something to celebrate. Staff, do you, Aaron and, and your group, do you understand where the council's going? We had a lot of discussion tonight.
I, I believe I do. I heard loud and clear that the council, I think individually, none of you are necessarily looking for a policy change on district proprietary-specific appointments. And, and just to be clear, the recommenda, or there was no recommendations tonight. This was a good discussion, it had to occur in this forum, so we appreciate the feedback. But everything that was in that staff report was just ideas. They weren't anything that staff came up with, it wasn't anything that the subcommittee was drilling down on. So, it was a starting point, you helped us get there. So I didn't hear proprietary council-district appointees. What I did hear loud and clear was all five of you want a say or want an opportunity to vet the candidates that are applying for a commissioner or board seat. Now, what we'll come back and figure out is what that interview process is going to look like. There'll probably be, need to be an extended recruitment and lead time, the way, not doing it the way we've done previously in my head, because I'm, we might need to get those out to the full council, provide you, you know, two to three weeks before we agendize for what may amount to each of you bringing forward, you know, your top three or whatever it may be. But we'll bring that back, the process, the details, you know, in the near future. But those were the big things I heard from all five of you, I think, unless I'm missing something.
I think you nailed it, but that's, you okay? Okay, 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 I think you nailed it. The reso, and then also, the, the, the language to prospective appointees, that, that the interview process is public.
The disclosure that you mentioned, yeah.
Yeah. One last thing, I'm going to ask my, my colleagues. In this process, do we need to reconsider the liaisons to the commissions? At, at, does that, at this point, does that become moot?
Yeah, I think it becomes moot because they're not really having anything to do with the selection.
How does staff feel about that?
You know, if you recall, the council wanted to have annual interfaces with all the boards and commissions. So, it was, what, two years ago where we implemented the opportunity every January, February, and March, where we're scheduling the entire commission to come before the city council.
Yeah, that was, that was phase one of my diabolical plan.
Okay.
This has been years in the making.
If the liaisons go away, I don't think the council's being denied that interface with the full commission because we could continue to have those annual meetings, allow them to share what they got planned, what they've completed, and then the council can ask questions of them. So, I don't think you're denying that if you choose to get rid of liaisons, in my personal opinion.
So, if we don't need them, let's, evaluate that, okay? Put that, it, it seems like we don't need them, but let that come back in your evaluation. City clerk?
Mr. Mayor, if you would like, or if the council would like, we could simply keep them for the balance of this year.
Of course.
We bring back appointments every January anyway. And we can determine in the next five to six months if whether we end up needing those liaisons for other purposes. Maybe staff needs them for, to vet certain subject matters. If they're utilized, fine. If not, during the appointment process in January, you guys can go ahead and make a decision.
Well, you know, that's a good idea, and I will tell you that in the past, when certain commissioners got off the straight and narrow, it was up to the liaison and the city manager to sort of nudge them back in line. So maybe there is an appropriate thing for liaison.
Or the mayor.
Or the mayor.
Or the mayor, that could be as well. So there you go, you, you know, you guys give it some thought and...
Or that might be appropriate for the mayor pro temp, you know? Like, the assistant principal comes with the chair.
Yeah, right, assistant principal.
You know, a robust conversation. I don't know that there's anything more to discuss.
Nope.
Dr. Ron?
No, thank you.
Um, how about you?
Good.
Yourself, Zach?
Just thanks for the great conversation.
Yeah, good conversation. All right, so, staff, you have your direction, and you, when do we want to see this back? What, knowing you'll need time to prepare it, we looking at 45 days? Less, more?
Actually, we'll bring it back relatively soon because we have vacancies coming up on some of the board and commission members.
Okay, very good.
So, so we'll bring it back in two, in two meetings, we'll try to bring it back in two meetings.
Very good, sounds good. All right, we'll need a, a vote to go to...
Motion to extend to 10:45, is that enough?
Second, that's enough. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 10:45, let's rock and roll, get this stuff done. All righty.
I thought this was going to be a quick one.
Let's see. I need a, I need a commissioners' report, talk to me, Bradley. Okay, you're a good man, Laney, talk to us.
No report, but I do want to say I'm thankful for the city council for appointing me as an involved citizen with absolutely no planning experience. I've worked really hard to learn things, and it's been a great learning curve. But if I had only been selected because I had planning experience, I would not have been selected. So, just a point.
And when I brought up that example of experience, I was thinking of you. No planning experience, but community experience, mom experience, you've been, done so many other things, you were capable.
Same way with me.
Yeah, and you, and, and that, that's where I was coming from. So I, I hope we keep that type of open mind, and I think we will. I think we will, and you're welcome. Mr. Levine?
I think we have a slide for you. Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff, I am here to invite you and the wonderful public of the city of Temecula to the September 11th Remembrance at the Duck Pine, be there at 6:30. It would be great, we have a great tradition. Thank you.
That's it?
I'm very happy to be here as well.
He's working on his reappointment. All righty, well, let's see here, I think I'm done. Let's, I, I closed my agenda. Oh, no.
No.
No, 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 public safety report. Are you there? Chris, what do you got?
Good evening. Report for July 2019, the fire department responded to 763 calls, a little typo there, for the month of July.